Ben, pay attention. We got a show to do.
What? I was looking out the window.
I know. You're always looking out that window. What's going on out the window? Give us a window update.
All right, hold on. Whoa, there's a party in the porta potty.
Oh, a porta potty.
Whoa, man, is that Pat Whalen down there?
Is it?
Wait, whoa!
Oh, wow.
Wait, who? Sorry. Inside joke.
Well, not to those who downloaded our interview with Pat Whalen. There's plenty of other episodes to check out, chicago reader dot com forward slash Jarofsky, and we are on the Reader YouTube page today. Shout out to the live streamers who found us, all right? Ben, take a guess as to which live streamers are joining us today.
Uh, who figured it out? Well, just off the top, Brianna, Frank, Yep. Uh, and Jay Marie, has she found her way there yet?
No Jay Marie yet. No Jay Marie yet. We're waiting for Jay Marie. Still no Radio Doogie. Still, still no Dog Dogerson. Where he at? Dog, dog, dog.
Could be a while. You know, change is hard, D. Changes, like adjustments are tough to make, and you know, I know better than most.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, it's gonna be a slow go here, but we're, we'll be there. We'll get there with the live streamers. Jim, Frank, and Brianna, you're on the livestream chat. Thank you guys so much. You found us. I posted it on Facebook, so maybe I'll get it on Twitter tomorrow. I don't know. Okay, your Ben Jarofsky Show for Tuesday, December 1st. Happy December, Ben.
Happy December. Ching, 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 ching. Another month of the pandemic. Another month.
Your Ben Jarofsky Show.
How I think of it.
For Tuesday, December 1st, now a Chicago Reader exclusive, is brought to you by, yeah, the Chicago Reader. Check out thechicagoreader.com and subscribe to The Reader to find out the latest in all things going on in Chicago, all right? And a great way to help out this program is to subscribe to the Chicago Reader. And if you've got some free time, maybe write them a letter, you know? On that Ben Jarofsky Show, it's amazing. All right. Plug my laptop in here. Okay, we're good to go there. All right, so, and also today's Ben Jarofsky Show is brought to you by our dear friends at the Chicago Federation of Labor. Oh, Ben, I do not want to hear you sing this song, but you're gonna. Comes from Frank. Let's hear you butcher "Jolene" by Dolly Parton.
Jolene, 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 jolene.
Hey.
I heard, I was just listening to Jolene about, I think it was on Thanksgiving. I was listening to Dolly Parton. Was that good, D?
It was awful. Hey, same new YouTube channel, same show, all right? Oh, that's a noise. Hey, Kyle found us on the livestream chat, and the Ben Jarofsky Show starts now. It is Tuesday, December 1st, and live from my apartment and his attic, get used to it, this is the Ben Jarofsky Show. Today on the program, a city council synopsis with our dear friend, David Glowatz. And now your host, Chicago Reader columnist Ben Jarofsky.
Hello, everybody. Ben Jarofsky here, columnist buyer beware Tuesday, and here's why. Well, it's been a long, 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 long time since we've been here, D. Been a long, 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 I just like to say, long, 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 long time, indeed. You have a good Thanksgiving holiday, young man?
Yeah, it was great. Excellent Thanksgiving.
It's good.
I had tiramisu.
What'd you have?
Tiramisu. Yeah.
What is that?
It's like a cake. Like, tastes like coffee a little bit. Yeah, yeah, tiramisu, yeah.
Man, I heard a boy named Sue.
Oh, really?
Anyway, I ate a lot, I walked, I sat around the fire pitch, and I watched Happiest Seasons, a Christian Stewart movie, which I loved way too much, a little embarrassed about how much I loved. Did you hear about this one, D?
No.
It's the lesbian couple, and Kristen Stewart's going to Mackenzie Davis's house for Christmas, and she's gonna propose to her, meet the family, and all of a sudden it turns out that Mackenzie Davis hasn't told her parents that she's a lesbian. And so she just says, oh, this is my friend. And they shove her in the basement. Well, I don't want to give too much of the movie away, except I loved it way, way too much, I want to say. Anyway, all the while, all the while, I was sitting around eating and looking at the fire in the fire pit and watching movies on TV. I was watching the updates on the political world outside my little holiday bubble. Saw this one article, Senator Joe Manchin, Democrat from West Virginia, pleading for compromise, said he'd been burnt out and disgusted with politics during the Trump era, but since the election of Joe Biden, he is just bounding out of bed with confidence every day. Here's his quote, quote, "I think we have a golden opportunity to bring the country back together and for us to work in the middle." End of quote, okay? If you say so, Joe.
You like that. You like that.
Yeah, I like the idea of all working together. I'm an all-working-together kind of guy. And then I read this article. Comes out of Georgia, Republicans are up in arms. No, they're not up in arms at the Democrats, they're up in arms at other Republicans for not fighting as hard as Donald Trump wants them against Joe Biden. Yeah, the election's over, but it's not still over. Trump wants Governor Brian Kemp in Georgia to issue an executive order overturning the election results in Georgia. Problem is, Governor Kemp does not have the authority to do that. So now the Republicans in the state are mad at him because he's not willing to break the law to please the president. To quote Newt Gingrich, who's Trump's man in Georgia, quote, "I've had very close friends, and they say, we have a Republican governor and a Republican Secretary of State, and they're both useless." So Republicans are really mad at Brian Kemp, who's the biggest MAGA hat wearer, by the way. Isn't that funny how they just flipped? This guy did everything he could to essentially keep Democratic voters for voting, everything he could to keep black people, basically, let's be honest, for voting. Now they're mad at him because he doesn't break the law to overturn an election that Joe Biden legally won. Here's another quote from a Trump supporter in Georgia, quote, "The Democrats have cheated. They have dead people voting. They manufactured votes." End of quote. Hey, Joe Manchin, good luck with this Republican Party. Meanwhile, a story breaking out of North Carolina, fascinating legal challenge. This is one for our ace attorney, Jim Coogan, to weigh in on. Maybe I'll bring him on to talk about this. Well, the next time he comes on, maybe we'll talk about this. Can you claim? Oh, yeah, the breaking news. Good, I like that. He hasn't lost, he hasn't lost a step over the holiday weekend. Here we go. Can you claim you were frauded when you were dealing with a man you know is a fraud? That is an excellent legal question. Here are the details. Frederick Eschelman, a hugely successful investor out of North Carolina, made a small fortune in pharmaceuticals, loves Donald Trump. He's MAGA to the core. Like the fellow in Georgia, he apparently thought the election was stolen and that Donald Trump should get to serve another four years in the White House. Unlike the fellow that the New York Times quoted in Georgia, he did more than gripe about it to the New York Times. Oh, no. Eschelman dug deep into his pockets and extracted $2.5 million, that's million with an M, and donated it to a Houston Texas-based outlet, Houston, Texas-based outlet called True the Vote. True the Vote is dedicated to challenging election results in seven battleground states. To fund these lawsuits, it said it needed to raise over $7 million. So Eschelman said, hmm, sounds good to me. Here, take $2.5 million. I just happen to have it laying around. Found some of the change under the sofa just last night. Now it turns out that True the Vote has dropped most of those lawsuits. I'm not sure if any are pending at all. And Eschelman wants his money back. Says he was duped. Says he's repeatedly called True the Vote and has had the following exchanges. This is Eschelman. Hello, is this True the Vote? Oh, no, no, this is Frank's pizza. You want to place an order? No, 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 this sounds like True the Vote to me. No, no, I swear. Hold on, now the phone's dropping. I can't hear a thing. Hey, hey, True the Vote! None of that conversation took place, but I just imagine it would have taken place. It's sort of what happened. Kept calling True the Vote, and they were going, oh, sorry, Eschelman. Anyway, so he's filed a lawsuit, Eschelman has. He wants his money back. Good luck with that lawsuit, Eschelman. Now, look, I'm no lawyer, but I'm, I gotta say, I'm kind of with True the Vote on this one, D. I'll tell you why. I mean, have you ever heard of COVID empire? That's the Latin phrase for buyer beware. I mean, Eschelman, hello, have you been paying attention? Time after time, business deals involving Donald John Trump end in lawsuits or incrimination. People go bankrupt, people yelling fraud, people yelling, get me my lawyer. Donald Trump is a con man. He's a gifted con man. He may be the greatest con man I've ever seen, and that includes Bernie Madoff. He knows what people want, and he gives it to them. In this case, he knows that people like Eschelman want to hear him say that they're up against a vast conspiracy of communists and radical thugs who operate out of black Ron cities, and they cheat. And if you send yours, if you send us your money right now, we'll root out those thugs and cheats. Got operators online, send that money. I don't know, man. I remember all those people who bought Donald Trump ties because they thought that would be helping businesses in the USA, and then they looked at the back of the tie and it said "Made in China." What do you think? What were you expecting? The dude's a con man. Frederick, I got bad news for you. You live with a con man, you die with the con man. Case closed. Huh? We got a great show today, everybody. Dave Glowatz.
Let's go!
He's no con man, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, no. He's our ace, City Hall reporter from inside government. He's got a whole bunch of clips from last week's city council meeting. This is a very, this will be a very Chicago-oriented show for all you Chicago junkies out there, Chicago government junkie. I know there's a lot of you. A lot of you people, Chicagoans who moved to Los Angeles, New York, you want to know what's going on in your hometown? We got all that for you. Dave's got.
We typically do that as a downloadable feature on the program. For those on the livestream chat, boy, you're in for a treat. This has slowly become one of my favorite segments here, our city council synopsis with one David Glowatz. Tons of audio. Oh, man, these two, they just go in the weeds. They nerd out. It's good times. So, hey, like, I'm glad the live streamers are getting to check this out. For those who may not download, which you should, by the way, chicago reader dot com forward slash Jarofsky, or wherever else you download podcasts. But yeah, I'm glad we're doing this today. So Mr. Bike, Mr. Bike, hopefully he'll have his bell.
Well, I, yes, hopefully. Oh, my God, I didn't tell him, bring the bell. I gave him the opportunity. He goes, do you want to go with the livestream? Or do you want to do it as a weekend bonus? He goes, no livestream. I said, let's rock, let's roll. And by the way, this is total improv. I've not heard any of the clips that he has, D. I have no idea where he's going with this. He leads, I follow. It's like a dance, cha-cha-cha, dancing with Mr. Bike, cha-cha-cha, spin move, wee.
Spin move, wee. Now, and one thing, too, that Ben does on the program is he does his impression of Mr. Bike, or David Glowatz. He doesn't really talk about bikes that much anymore, and I like what he's doing now with the city council thing, so I'm trying to step away from calling him Mr. Bike. Our city council beat reporter, David Glowatz, Ben, he'll always do an impression of David throwing to me on audio. Ben, could you?
Yes, he's really good. He goes, you know, it kind of makes me look bad, because in
Oh, big time. Oh, big time. Big time.
Because Glowatz is so organized and detailed, and he sends the clips, and they have little names on them. Like Frank, I sent the clip to Dennis today. There's no name on it from Blago, and who knows if, Uncle D?
I'm setting up the Reader, I'm setting up the Reader YouTube channel, like, all right, we're going live for the first time, like, three minutes ago. Yo, D, man, I got that thing! Play that thing, huh? What? Okay, yeah, that thing, yeah. Okay, great, great.
Yeah, the Frank thing for Blago. Anyway.
Let's hear your David Glowatz, though.
Uh, Dennis, play the Lori Lightfoot bit, because he has some headline. So it's like, Dennis just knows, oh, play Lori Lightfoot. Oh, play, you know, play Carlos Ramirez Rosa. They're all organized. It's like, you know, I'm kind of like jealous of him a little bit. It's like, oh, there's goody-goody. And Dennis is like the teacher who goes, good job, David. I like you. Golden star.
Your prize is in the mail.
Wish all of our students could handle these assignments like you do. And I'm like, oh, God, there I am again. So anyway, Glowatz is great. He's got, I don't know how many. He said he has so many, he doesn't even know if we'll get to them all. I said, well, maybe we could do a special bonus segment on them. They're really good stuff, and we've been talking Chicago politics together, Dave Glowatz and myself, since about 2007. So some things never get old. So Dave Glowatz will be here. He's not a con man. He's a great Chicago journalist, and we'll be breaking down the budget debate that took place last Tuesday when the city council voted 29 to 21 to adopt Mayor Lori Lightfoot's budget, at which point she immediately went out, lit up a cigar, ate a steak, and I think drank a beer. I think that's what she said. Steak, cigar, beer.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure which order it came into. I'm not sure what came first, the cigar, the steak, or the beer, but she was very happy.
I mean, maybe hit the bong? I don't know. I mean, maybe, probably, I don't know. Maybe, maybe, who knows?
I just don't think Lori Lightfoot's a hit-the-bong type of person. Just don't think it, D.
Well, it is legal, so, you know, it's fine.
Now, there's nothing wrong with it. There was nothing wrong with it when it was illegal, except that it was illegal, and that was what really was wrong with it. The fact that something that there was nothing wrong with was illegal was what was wrong with it, if you follow that.
No.
You got to smoke some reefer to follow that. Then you'll follow it, and then you'll go, oh, yeah, it makes perfect sense. Yeah, so I don't think Lori Lightfoot was smoking reefer, and I don't think Dave Glowatz was either. In fact, I don't think Dr. D, we call him Dr. Doobie from time to time, I don't think he smokes reefer anymore. Who's smoking all this reefer? Take the deep dive on that and many other questions with Dave Glowatz, but before we do that, the young man from home, the man they call the doctor, with the news.
What's going on, everybody? Name's Dennis. Ben, by the way, I saved you some tiramisu from Thanksgiving. Yeah, I did. I thought, boy, Ben would really like this. I saved you some. I put it in the freezer.
I'm really gonna miss celebrating my birthday with you, but I'll save you a piece of cake. I'll freeze it.
Froze it for you, yeah?
Oh, my God, I forgot that. How could I forget that? We had so much fun with that bit. That was the bit last week that we riffed on. Total improv, folks. I didn't even know. No, I think I did know you were gonna play. Anyway, that was the one where the mayors got together from all around Chicago, including Lori Lightfoot and some of the suburbs, to talk about, urge us, we'll get into this with the news, urge us, don't get together with your families. And so that, to really like get it, drive the message home, they staged these phone conversations, obviously staged some of the worst acting I've ever seen, some of the worst actors I've ever seen, pretending to have phone conversations with their loved one, which that was the mayor from Highland Park, right?
Yeah, Nancy.
Yeah, she's gonna freeze the cake. I don't know. You know, I've talked to a lot of people about that. Pretty much everyone agrees, just go buy a new cake. Get some Sara Lee. Get a Danish. Have an egg roll. Have two.
And very, a lot of Chicago Reader stuff going on today. As we mentioned, it is our first day on the Chicago Reader YouTube channel exclusively. Moving forward, the Ben Jarofsky Show will be exclusively with the Chicago Reader. Shout out to the Chicago Reader for keeping the Ben Jarofsky Show alive. You are awesome. Thank you so much. And also, it's the first Tuesday of the month, and that means it's a virtual First Tuesday with Ben Jarofsky and Maya Dukmasva. Isn't that right, Ben?
Yes, and thank you for remembering that. Maya gave me a lot of grief last night. There was a lot of baby boomer shaming going on last night, D, on that phone call from Maya to me. I just want to tell you that. Ben, you have to do more promotion of the First Tuesday. I'm getting in trouble with millennials left and right these days. Anyway, do you know what the, if you want to listen, it's gonna be a great show tonight at 6:30. And, oh my God, Peter Cunningham and older woman Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez will be joining Maya and myself, talk about where the Democratic Party's going, the riffs in the Democratic Party. This will be a really good one, because Rosanna is one of the leaders of the Socialist Caucus in the city council. She voted against Mayor's budget. She is a leader of the defund the police movement here in the city of Chicago. And Peter PC Cunningham, he's on the show many times, is our, our show's favorite centrist. He was a former speechwriter for Mayor Daley, and he worked for Arnie Duncan in Washington at the Department of Education, and he's sort of a bridge between the centrist crowd in the Democratic Party, is represented by the president-elect Joe Biden, and the lefties, who, I may not even know if they're literally in the Democratic Party, some of them, you know what I mean? They have nowhere else to go but the Democratic Party. So he sort of plays a role, and it's a very thankless role largely, to try to keep the two sides together, try to find common ground. That's a tough challenge, man. So it'd be interesting, a very interesting conversation, where the Democrats are going, what can they do to find commonality. And that story I read, D, probably be talking about this tonight with Peter and Rosanna and Maya, and that story in the New York Times with Joe Manchin, they get into the fact that AOC, who really represents at a national level what Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez represents here in Chicago, has chided him, Manchin, on Twitter, making fun of him for being too close to Donald Trump. And so he has responded, Manchin has, by saying all she does is tweet. This is a favorite. God, I've been hearing this one forever. You know, in fact, many of my moderate friends came on the show, D, and said this about our beloved Bernie Sanders, that all he does is talk, that he never introduced any legislation. What bills has he's passed? And I'm like, like, what freaking bills has anybody passed that you would like? The only bills that you can get passed are bills that they really don't like. You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's like criticizing a lefty in the Chicago City Council because he can't get Rahm Emanuel or Mayor Daley or now Lori Lightfoot to pass lefty legislation. Well, yeah, you're one of five. So it's like, if you abandon all your principles, you can get stuff passed. What's the point? It's kind of one strain of it, you know? It's not like Bernie wasn't trying. How many bills has he passed? So Manchin's like, yeah, I don't know how many bills she's passed. I know she tweets a lot. I'm like, wait a minute. How many, what? Our President of the United States, the current president, is Mr. Tweet. What bills has he passed? He just has executive orders and tweets. Democrats are not supposed to tweet anymore? Anyway, I'm gonna try to be really neutral, D, on this one, and let Peter and Rosanna have the debate. But, you know, just want to point out.
Yeah, good luck with that. Stay in neutral.
Yeah, I'm gonna really try. Really.
It's $5 to watch it live, okay? It's, you know, a virtual hideout. What are we, monsters? We're not meeting in public? Come on, we're watching it virtually. First Tuesdays with Maya and Ben. Find them on Facebook. You can get all the information there. Get your ticket for $5. No video to watch for free. That'll later, that'll be posted later. So the video and everything, you get the video, five bucks, you're really helping out the hideout as well. Go check out tonight's virtual First Tuesday, the future of the Democratic Party. Where do we go? I don't know.
Here's the noonchorus.com backslash hideout. Maya yelled at me, D.
Nice.
She told me, I have to read this. She goes, Ben! I wish I had that tape to play it. Noonchorus.com backslash hideout. N-O-O-N-C-H-O-R-U-S dot com, C-O-M, backslash hideout. I can spell that for you, too. H-I-D-E-O-U-T.
Guys, now you have literally no excuse, all right? You have every reason to go check this out. It's gonna be tonight, and it's happening at about 6:30, the typical time for a hideout show, right?
Yeah, 6:30. And guys, it's for the hideout. Come on, man, they've been battered. We've all been battered. My beloved Reader's been battered. We'll be getting into that in a little while. But the hideout has been closed since March. The hideout, I've got a special love for the hideout, because they, you know, they put a lefty like me on stage with McDumpkey. It was like a centrist and a lefty. We've been, I've been doing this for a while, D. You know, although McDumpkey, boy, when he's, you should hear the, the real McDumpkey. Guys, to the left of me.
All right, let's not, let's.
I'm not supposed to let that cat out of the bag.
Yeah, let's not expose McDumpkey here. Oh, there it is. Yes, yes. You know we're on the right track when you get a good cat out of the bag at 24 minutes into the show. Hey, let's give shout outs to people who have found us now on the YouTube, or the Reader YouTube channel. Shout out to Ro. Ro has found us on the livestream chat. Ro, what's up? Kyle, Kyle has found us, Ben.
Well, I'm gonna repeat absolutely everything I said before he got on, so you can hear it. But I do it fast. There we go. That's kind of the.
Once again, new YouTube channel, same old show. Not a thing has changed. Let's see here. Oh, okay, let's talk about this. We got someone from the Reader coming on as well. Colette is gonna be joining us from the Chicago Reader. You know, it's a new thing we're doing here with the Chicago Reader, so we're gonna be talking with Colette. She's gonna be talking about what the Reader's got going on here. So with the time we have, let's, Ro weighed in on the livestream chat. We got local news. We'll do that a little later on in the program. Let's see here, Ro weighed in on the livestream chat. It's something that we, honestly, I hope the story doesn't go away. I hope it stays around forever and ever. Well, I only has a few months left, but Ro says, I read that Rahm is, Mayor Rahm, former Chicago mayor, Rahm Emanuel, she says, I read that Rahm is really, really pushing for that transportation job, and it could be announced today.
Yeah. This, and by the way, that would be perfect for tonight's discussion at the hideout, because Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez is the one who initiated that open letter.
Bless her heart.
Urging, urging President-elect Joe Biden not, not, not to name Rahm as Transportation Secretary. And Peter Cunningham, as I said, is of more of the moderate centrist persuasion, and I'm sure he will articulate a reason why Rahm would make a masterful Transportation Secretary. And I will politely listen to PC's argument. I do believe that I am urging Joe Biden not to name Rahm to this position. I will now, D, flip-flop and give.
Hey, 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 that's not the noise for flip-flopping.
Well, okay, but it's not really, it's not really a whole flip-flop. Let me just say this. I will now show you, like, Jim Coogan has always said to me, Ben, a lawyer should be able to articulate either side of a case. So you should be able, you could be a prosecutor, but to be a really great lawyer, you should put yourself in the mindset of a criminal defense lawyer, and that'll make you a better prosecutor. So you should be able to argue both sides. So now I'll argue, it's not a complete flip-flop. I'm just going to argue the Rahm side. Rahm is a wheeler-dealer. Rahm lives on the phone. Rahm is a master promoter. Rahm loves to work with Republicans. Rahm likes to get credit for building things. And so this is the kind of guy that you should have in charge of a program in which you're distributing money. So it's like you're passing out money. It's, if you want to, let's say, let's say you want to win over a Republican senator whose vote is really important. A Republican senator like, oh, I'm just, Susan Collins. So you get Rahm on the phone, hey, Susan, you want that bus line, that new bus line? Making this up as I go along. In Brunswick? That's the city in Maine. I'm just making this, making this up as I go along. Well, here you go. By the way, we have this big vote coming up on Dr. D being appointed as the head of the FDA. We could really use your support. But he swears a few times. So that's like the best I could do. Like, he's a wheeler-dealer. Transportation's gonna be huge, because supposedly Joe Biden is gonna commit himself to the infrastructure work that Donald Trump said he was gonna do, and they got kind of bored with. This is blurry. I think he'll tweet. So, you know, there, Joe Manchin, heck of a job Donny did on that transportation stuff, huh? So supposedly Joe Biden will be throwing out a lot of money, stimulus money, and it'll be coming through the Department of Transportation. Rahm, oh my God, D, he is so excited. Are you kidding? To have that much power and that much control, like, to have people have to come to him, just begging him?
I don't think you're realizing it. And that much content on the Ben Jarofsky Show? Oh, my God. A part of me hopes he gets it.
Well, you know, I have to say, there is that. There is.
For selfish reasons only, like, oh, my God, the things we can do with that on the Ben Jarofsky Show.
And I feel compelled to say this. One of our listeners and one of our dearest friends on the Ben Jarofsky Show, who comes on from time to time, young Kenneth Davis.
Oh, that, okay. When you did that, now I remember. Ken and Davis.
Ken Davis is a big fan of Rahm Emanuel as the Transportation Mayor. And he extols the virtue. Remember, he came on the show and he told me, Ben, I'm gonna tell you right now, Rahm is the best transportation mayor we've ever had, that we had an argument over it. And I don't think I convinced him. He definitely didn't convince me. Rahm, he's the one, Rahm came up with the flyover. Ken Davis loves the flyover. You know, D, every time, it's been so long since I've been on a train, but we go past Belmont, and then we'd see like the work begun on the flyover. I think it's Ken Davis, because, oh, he loves that. And Glowatz, Glowatz is another one who loves to fly, to fly over, Ben. It's gotta be so.
Is that, is that the Brown Line rideover I hear right now?
Yeah, they're on, hey, I think Rahm's riding the train, getting ready to be in transportation. Getting a little workout there. He's driving the train today. So there are people who defend Rahm Emanuel in Chicago. A gentleman, Mike Gold, wrote a column. A gentleman, Mike Gold, wrote a column defending Rahm, saying Rahm is an asshole, but he's a great asshole. I, I, that was the gist of it. I, I, I have a lot of problems with giving Rahm Emanuel that much control and power. I don't think he can handle it. I don't think he handled it when he was in Chicago. And so I don't think it's wise to give him that much power. And the other, and the other point is, I do believe there should be consequences for what he did with Laquan McDonald tape. He buried evidence of a police shooting. He buried it. He concealed it. He fought like hell to keep it from going public. And it was only a lawsuit filed by a reporter and a community activist, a Freedom of Information Act lawsuit that went before a Cook County judge that forced Rahm to release it. And so I just don't think you ignore something like that. I think there has to be consequences for something like that. They just wanna paper it over. Oh, well, it doesn't really matter. It doesn't apply to transportation. What, character doesn't matter? What, breaking the law doesn't matter? What, concealing evidences of a murder doesn't matter? I don't know how you just walk away from something. Democrats are always calling on Republicans to have standards and do the right thing and, and play by the rules and stuff. And so what? When your guy, because you think you wanna be on his Rolodex or something? When you think you got your guy in there? Doesn't matter what he did in the past? So now we're only, we're gonna be like Republicans, huh? Is that how we're gonna play the game? We're gonna look the other way when our guys do something? So no, Dee, I don't think, I'm really hoping Joe Biden does not pick Rahm Emanuel. I got this feeling that he will pick Rahm Emanuel because the stories keep coming out. I'm like, no, don't do it, Joey B. Don't do it, Joey B. He's in that basement down in Delaware with his broken foot. You hear that, Dee? Broke his foot with the dog. Who breaks their foot with a dog? I've been dogs my whole life. Feel it for you, Joey B. Don't do it.
Regardless of what- Regardless of what happens, we're gonna be keeping you updated here on the Ben Giravsky Show. You know, we were talking about flyover. Ben, what do you say we fly over to the guest we have right now, huh?
Can I just say something? Colette Willard, your, our next guest. If you heard that, you would know that this man went to radio school. Because that's a master transition. And that brings us to Colette Willard. Colette gave me a call last week. It's a miracle, Colette, I remembered it, because in between your phone call and our show today, I ate a lot of turkey. But Colette is Director of Development, my beloved Chicago Reader, and she wants to tell us all about what's going on in the Reader with the telethon. Is that correct, Colette?
That's right. And before I say anything about that, I have to say, that dog story with his broken foot, that's a cover up. Something else happened. Come on, who breaks their foot with a dog?
Colette Willard getting to the bottom of things. See, I'm with you 100%. I remember he pushed that on the dog, man.
Come on, that's not fair. Just because he's a rescue dog, that's mean.
Was it a rescue dog? I did not know that.
Oh, yeah. First rescue dog in the White House.
How did I not know that? What kind of dog is it, do you know?
Well, I don't know. My mother-in-law told me this, so maybe it's a lie. Who knows?
Mother-in-law, Colette. That's, I'm sure she's a good source. All right, Colette, give us the scoop on the Reader, everything we need to know about the telethon going on at the Reader. Go ahead.
Awesome, yeah. So this is our second annual parentheses virtual telethon. So this is live on Facebook every day this week from noon to 1:00. It's also on the Chicago Reader website, chicago reader dot com slash telethon. From noon to 1:00, if you donate during that hour, you are entered to win a brand spanking new designed Reader tote bag and a Reader Reporter's Notebook, so you can feel just like Ben when you're taking notes for your grocery shopping. And if you donate $100 or more during, from noon to 1:00 all this week, we'll give you a tote bag, no questions asked. Each day, we're having hosts from Reader staff. So today, we just had Tracy Bane, publisher of the Chicago Reader, and Yasmin Dominguez, coordinator of the Chicago Independent Media Alliance, in conversation about their kind of paths through journalism and what the future of Chicago media looks like in their eyes. Tomorrow, we're having a conversation between Amy Matheny and Carrie Reed about all things Chicago Reader. They have a slate of guests lined up. I don't even know if we'll be able to get them all in in the hour, but it's gonna be great. And we're just really excited to introduce you all to who we are, especially now that we're a nonprofit organization certified stamped by the IRS.
So donations, that means they're tax deductible, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, tax deductible. We're working on getting those letters out to folks. We wanted to make sure people could make tax deductible donations before the end of the year. So all donations can be made at chicago reader dot com slash donate.
So the reality is, and we've talked about this many times, Colette, with Tracy Bane on the show, with Maya on the show, the reality is that the Reader was hit very hard by the pandemic. Many of the businesses that advertise in the Reader, the Reader's always survived on advertising. Reader's always been free, excuse me. And so many of the businesses that advertise in the Reader closed as a result of the pandemic or really saw their businesses fall. Talk about restaurants, nightclubs and music venues, et cetera, and so forth, bars, like the hideout. And so as a result, we have less money coming in. We have to change our whole outlook, our whole view. People have, staffers have been furloughed, people taking pay cuts. A big commitment on the part of Reader staffers to keep the publication going. A very important voice in Chicago, in my humble opinion, alternative newspaper, tends to look at things from the left. And I believe that voice is needed and that viewpoint is needed for Chicago. We shouldn't, you know, it's easy for Chicago to have like that herd mentality. It's just good to have an alternative paper, thinks things a little differently, goes into a little different direction. That's my pitch, Colette Willard. What do you think? What, what's the importance of the Reader in the city of Chicago in your humble opinion?
I absolutely agree. I think, you know, we are the first stop on a lot of people's careers in positive and negative ways. I think, you know, we, we've broken stories that have changed, that have led to policy changes. We have started, you know, music, musicians off on their careers. We've been the first to review. We are the voice of alternative Chicago and we really believe in getting that authentic voice of the city we live in out to the people for free. I think something that kind of gets lost sometimes is, the Chicago Reader was the first free alternative weekly ever in the United States. So that's a pretty amazing thing and we're still free. We're not, we're not trying to charge for our content, but it does mean we need our community to support us. Because if we wanna remain independent, we need you.
All right, Colette Willard, so before we let you go, give folks the information if they wanna contribute money to help the Reader stay afloat. One more time, give us that info.
Please donate at chicago reader dot com slash donate. Thanks so much for having me, Ben.
All right, thank you very much, Colette Willard. In addition to being the Development Director for the Chicago Reader, she is also in charge of reporting on dogs for the Ben Giravsky Show. She's the one who broke the news that Joe Biden had a rescue dog. Did not know that, Dee, and I needed Colette to help me out on that.
I'm with her on that. I think there's more to this ankle breaking thing. A dog, come on. Hey, I think, um, I feel what she's saying. I feel what she's saying.
I, I, you know, I have, I hate to say that, I felt the same thing from the get-go. I'm like-
Oh, really?
Whoever, I've been walking dogs my whole life. How you break, how you gonna hurt your ankle walking a dog?
All right, let's get dog gig going on the live stream chat, guys. What do you think, huh? BS or do you think this is the real deal? Let us know on the live stream chat. Yeah, so thanks to Colette there, that was awesome. Ben, what do you say? We take a quick break. I'll play some Michael Gerardi and I'll get ahold of Dave Glowatz when we talk with Dave. And then after that, we'll do the local news.
That sounds great, man.
Really?
Yeah, sounds absolutely awesome. I love that idea.
You like my idea, really?
Yeah, I like your idea. You're full of good ideas.
Oh, wow.
That's why we pay all the money we do, all right? You're the idea, man.
Cool. I'm really glad you liked that. All right, yeah, we're gonna take a quick break here. We got some Michael Gerardi coming up here. Shout out to everyone who has found us on our new exclusive YouTube channel at the Chicago Reader. Kyle, Frank, Jim, Ro, Brianna, we're, Radio Doogie, where you at, dude? Where you at, dude? Doogie? He's probably at an Old Country Buffet crying somewhere. He loves Old Country Buffet. Yeah, so weigh in on the live stream chat. Remember, for those who download the show, nothing really changes. You find it at the same place you've always found it, all right? Just chicago reader dot com forward slash Giravsky, wherever else you download podcasts, subscribe. And yeah, we're taking a quick break here. Let's hear some Michael Gerardi. And when we come back, a city council synopsis with the one, the only Mr. Bike, no, 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 Mr. City Council, Dave Glowatz. It's the Ben Giravsky Show. We are live from my apartment and Ben's attic. Don't go anywhere. Hour number two of your Ben Giravsky Show for Tuesday, December 1st, is brought to you by the Chicago Reader and the Chicago Federation of Labor. Benny J, take it away.
Reached a new low by Michael Gerardi, one of my favorite Michael Gerardi songs, Reached a New Low. Have we reached a new low in the city of Chicago? Have we reached a new low with our budget that was just passed last week? Have we reached a new low in relationships between Alderman and the mayor? Or have we reached a new high? Is this a promise of democracy that's finally flourishing in the city where Alderman dared to dissent from the mayor? And yet the mayor still works to craft together a majority to pass the budget and then celebrates by smoking a cigar, drinking a beer and eating a steak, not necessarily in that order.
Scotch.
Oh, Scotch. It wasn't beer, I knew it. Think, that's why we have Dave Glowatz here. Among other things, he's gonna tell us if we reached a new high or we reached a new low. Or if I know, Dave Glowatz, he's not really gonna take a stand one way or the other in any of these things. It'll go, well, Ben, what do you think? Dave Glowatz, welcome back to the show, young man.
It's really great to be here, Andy. You will never stop in telling us what you think, will you?
No, well, you tell me what you think all the time, but you just never do it on the air. Oh, my God, in the old days, this guy's such a freaking lefty, he would be pushing me to the left. Ben, the Dems, but you wouldn't know that from here.
You're screwing up my reputation of journalistic objectivity.
I'm sorry. The man has, he has, he's a human being, ladies and gentlemen, okay? It's like-
You don't know that.
That's true, he could be a robot. Anyway, Dave Glowatz, let's take the deep dive. About once a month or so, Dave comes on and he has excerpts from the city council meetings. We do not, he does not share that with me beforehand, so I really don't know what he's going to do. I just follow his lead. As I said, we're dance partners and he's John Travolta. And, um, what's the lady's name in Pulp Fiction, Dee?
Uma Thurman.
Oh, yeah, I'm Uma Thurman, just following his name. So, um, so what you got for me? It was 29 to 21 was the total vote in favor of the budget last Tuesday. That'll be the headline. I don't wanna give anything away because I have a feeling you're gonna cover a lot of ground. So Dave Glowatz, take it away.
So what are we talking about? We're talking about the city's 2021 budget. And I guess it would be helpful to tell our listeners why the city has a budget. And I'm just gonna take it to the really simple perspective of the average person thinking about when next year comes, they're gonna figure out how, how much they need to live and what their living expenses are. And, you know, you've got things like rent, balanced against things like your income. And I'm sure that many of our listeners have experienced, because of the pandemic, a change in their income, but their expenses, living expenses have stayed the same. So that same thing has happened to the city, that because of the pandemic, there's a whole bunch of income that the city gets in terms of things like taxes on restaurants and hotels that are a significant part of its, its revenue that have gone way down. Meanwhile, the expenses that the city has to operate, many have stayed the same and some have gone up. For instance, one of the big ones is that the state has mandated a certain increase in the amount that the city must make to workers' pensions. And that's going, going up pretty radically. There's what's called a ramp. It's going up every year. So that's a dilemma that the city found itself in, in looking at the 2021 budget. budget. And the city has a calendar budget here, namely, it starts on January 1st. So it had to, by law, pass a budget before the end of this year. Unlike the state of Illinois, whose budget begins on what day, Ben?
June 1st.
July 1st, close.
June 1st is usually the date where they have to have the vote, the budget passed. But you're correct. I said correct.
It's okay. So that's what, that's essentially what's going down.
Thank you. Oh, my God, I had a flashback to getting something wrong in high school. The teacher looking at me going, you have some serious problems here, but we will pass you anyway because I'm sick of looking at you in the same classroom for the last year. Go ahead, David. I had that flashback.
You're in a situation where your teacher looks like John Travolta, too.
Yes, and he dances like Travolta. Go ahead.
Doublet charging. So you alluded to the vote on the budget. So on November 24th, the city council met to consider the budget proposals by the mayor, Lori Lightfoot administration. There were actually a whole bunch of ordinances that the budget consists of, and I'm gonna focus on three of them. One is what's called the appropriations ordinance, and it simply lays out what are we spending money on in all the city departments? So that's the expenses. And for those keeping score at home, that ordinance number is oh, 2020 hyphen five, seven, seven, five. And I believe you said the vote was?
Twenty-nine to 21.
That's right, 29 in favor. And as budget votes go, across the many years that you and I have been observing city council budget votes, how would you compare this one to prior ones?
It was closer than any one that we've had since, and you have to go back to council wars in the 1980s. And I think that was even, that was well before I knew you. So it's, it is the closest budget vote we've had in the last, oh, my God, can I do the quick math? Thirty-four years, I'd say, or 33 years.
But still relatively comfortable lead, you know, by eight votes. So that was on the appropriations votes. There are two, what we call revenue ordinances in this budget, and it's divided simply into revenues that don't come from property taxes. So they do come from other taxes, like things I mentioned earlier, like the hotel tax and other fees. That one was, that ordinance number is oh, 2020 hyphen five, seven, four, three. And then there's the property tax levy ordinance, oh, 2020 hyphen five, seven, four, seven. On the first one, the non-property tax revenues, the vote was the same as for the appropriations ordinance. In other words, it was 29 in favor, 21 against, and it was the same set of aldermen voting both ways. The property tax levy ordinance, it was slightly different. There were 28 in favor. So one alderman decided to support, I'm sorry, to not support property tax levy revenues, but the other.
What a joke.
That was Alderman Stephanie Coleman of the South Side's 16th Ward.
That's correct.
So where would you like to go first on this, Ben?
Where would I like to go first on this? Well, why don't we start with the property tax levy? If you have bits to play on that, it's a delightful little, if you have anything on that one. That's one of my favorite little dances, speaking of dances, in this case, Stephanie Coleman. She's not the first person to do this, by the way, to vote against increasing the taxes and then to turn around and vote to spend the taxes that she voted not to increase, which I always thought was a little inconsistent. I think, I don't think you can have it two ways. I mean, you can, literally, she did. But I don't think it's, it's inaccurate. It's not like honest government, if you want to say. If you're not gonna vote, if you don't believe that it's fair to raise taxes on property owners, then you should not then vote to spend the money. You get what I'm saying? It's like, it's just a great inconsistency. And you do it solely just to cover yourself. So it's like you could say, well, I voted to protect you from expenditures, you know, I voted to protect you from raising your tax, your property taxes, then you turn around, yeah, but you voted to spend them. So I say we stop, start with that. That's my idea. What's your idea?
Dennis, let's do Coleman first. Well, let's have Alderman Coleman explain herself. I won't speak for her, and let's hear what she had to say.
Alderman Coleman. Mayor Lori Lightfoot, I respect and appreciate your leadership. I am proud to serve and work with your administration as a strong, black, progressive woman. Despite my admiration for this group and their hard work, I still can't support even a modest increase in real estate taxes. The property owners in my ward cannot afford to pay more. Today, I prioritize my community in this tough decision. I will vote against the property tax increase, but Mayor Lori Lightfoot and to this great council, I do support our budget.
So it sounds like she wants to have it both ways, Ben. You might remember that prior to this, the mayor reportedly had private meetings, a video conference, I presume, with members of the Aldermanic Black Caucus, in which she said she essentially threatened them reportedly by saying, if you vote no on my budget, don't expect shit from me. So it sounds like, you know, some might read into Alderman Coleman's, Alderman Coleman's remarks that she's saying, don't hurt me. I gotta do this, but don't hurt me.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's, by the way, yes, that's a good point. You notice the respect in which we, Alderman Coleman, Alderwoman Coleman, I should say, addresses Mayor Lori Lightfoot, the deference that she shows her. So she's making it very clear that even though she's voting against the property tax increase, does not mean she's voting against Lori Lightfoot. It should not be viewed as a sign of disrespect. And that's so important. We'll probably be talking about this later on, Dave, but we'll coming back to this again and again. It's so important with that relationship that aldermen have with the mayor and the way the mayor based, it's really like this folklore, this myth that Chicagoans subscribe to, and it's really spread by the mainstream media, that a mayor is only really effective if he or she can win budget votes by commanding majorities. And I don't subscribe to this view, Dave. All the mayor needs is 25 votes. Yes, she's the, she casts a deciding vote. So I've said this many, I don't understand what, why they're tripping over whether she gets 35, or 38, or 45, etc. It means nothing in terms of whether it passes or it doesn't pass. But so Lori Lightfoot is very conscious that she's not gonna get the same number of confirmation votes that she got last year for her budget. She's not getting the same number of votes that Rahm Emanuel got, that Mayor Daley got. She's very aware of that. People won't let her forget that. That drove the coverage of the whole budget debate coming up to Tuesday's vote. And so she, Lori Lightfoot's aware of that, and she sees it as a sign of respect. And so Stephanie Coleman must assure Lori Lightfoot that even though she's voting no, and even though that her no vote will reduce the number of yes votes that Lori Lightfoot can brag about while she smokes her cigar and drinks her scotch and eats her steak, that does not mean she disrespects her. Very important protocol by Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman as she votes no on raising taxes.
Dennis, let's do Burnett next. But the, does that mean okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Dennis and I are looking at each other. The mayor, however, is, I shouldn't say however, and we know that the mayor is sensitive to this sort of deference and this respect. And this is brought out by comments from 27th Ward Alderman Walter Burnett on the West Side. Let's hear what he had to say.
Alderman Burnett. This budget has a lot of compassion in it. So much compassion that all my colleagues have touched on it, that you touch every community, Mayor. So I just wanna say to you, to all of the people in your administration, everyone that's been involved, all of the caucuses, the Black Caucus has worked so hard and we all came together. I just wanna say thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Hopefully, we will continue to try and figure out a way to bring some of these taxes down in the future and make things better for folks. But in the interim, we have to continue to move forward. We have to continue to put ourselves in a position to be able to attract more to the cities. Because I see a lot of horizons, a lot of great horizons coming after we get these vaccines, after things get back in here. I think we're gonna be doing very well. But I think we're gonna be in a better position to be able to deal with it and help our community. So, Mayor, I just wanna say, I commend you on what you've done. I admire all of the things that you've done in talking to everyone, everyone, even folks you didn't even want to talk to, you spoke to, in trying to make this budget better. I just wanna say thank you and I support this budget.
Thank you, Walter. You made me cry, touched my heart, and I appreciate you.
He made her cry, Ben.
Yes, he made her cry. Thank you, Walter. And it should have been thank you, Alderman Burnett, but whatever. She got caught away, caught up in the moment of crying. I should tell people a little bit of Walter Burnett. Walter Burnett's the alderman of the 27th Ward, which is now a West Side Ward. Originally, Walter Burnett, he came from Cabrini Green, which is on the North Side. So they, in order to keep, to create a ward for Walter Burnett, they moved it from Cabrini Green, which is roughly Halsted on the East, all the way into the West Side to create him a ward. That was back in the 1990s. And Walter Burnett is, that speech he gave is a very familiar one from Walter Burnett. I think every year he gives a similar speech as he arises to support the mayor, whoever that mayor is. He's what you would call a mayoral loyalist. I'm not gonna say rubber stamper because that would be like putting some kind of what, like negative spin on it. Let's just say he appreciates mayors. He appreciated Mayor Daley. He appreciated Mayor Rahm. So if you're going to be consistent, and I appreciate Walter for being consistent, how about that? A lot of appreciation. If you're going to be a mayoral loyalist, if you're going to support Mayor Daley and you're going to support Mayor Rahm, then why shouldn't you support Lori Lightfoot? It's the same budget games are all playing, ladies and gentlemen. This is not a balanced budget. They're projecting a balance, as Dave said. They're projecting they're gonna get enough money to meet the expenses that they have. Well, you know, who knows what's gonna happen next month? My bet is that like in February or March, they'll go, oh, my God, our projections weren't as rosy as they should have been. And we're in a debt. We have a huge deficit. We're gonna have to raise taxes to accommodate. This is traditional budgeting in the city of Chicago. Mayor Rahm did it. Mayor Daley did it. And Daddy Daley, Old Man Daley invented this game. And so if you're going to support essentially this facade that we have a balanced budget, if you're going to support the notion that the city is well-run by an all-powerful mayor who is benevolent and looks out for interests, when that mayor is Daley, and when that mayor is Rahm, then you should be consistent and do it when Lori Lightfoot is the mayor. But some aldermen didn't. We'll get into that in a little while, Dave Goetz. So yes, Walter Burnett singing the praises of Lori Lightfoot, bringing tears to her eyes, commending her, appreciating her, loving her. Look, far be it for me to cause trouble in paradise, but Lori, I'm just saying, he said the same things to Daley or Rahm, too. You know what I'm saying? He may, I think he may have made Rahm cry a couple times.
I was gonna ask that. I'm guessing he's never made you cry. Dennis, we're gonna do Sanchez next. It's very interesting to me to, got that? It's very interesting to me that this, this starts to show us the difference in perspective that aldermen have about the degree of collaboration that they feel the mayoral administration had with aldermen in doing some compromising around what aldermen wanted to have put in and taken, put into and taken out of this budget. And that's, the sort of contrast is exemplified by remarks from Alderman Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez of the 33rd Ward. Let's hear what she had to say.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. We're voting on a budget that continues to prioritize policing over all other services to support our communities. A budget that continues throwing money at an institution that has demonstrated itself to be resistant to reform and that has cost us more than a billion dollars in the last decade in misconduct lawsuits and servicing debt to pay those lawsuits. Property tax increases will inevitably result in rent increases that will impact people already behind on the rent payments and their ability to stay in their communities. Our people are desperate. In what may be one of the worst recessions ever, this budget does nothing to provide economic support. In fact, it will make our communities' economic conditions worse over time. The new investment in violence prevention, which is welcome, is 10 million. Our police budget is 1.7 billion dollars. We got 2 million to split between two crisis response pilots. That's not enough by any stretch of imagination to even complete a planning phase for either pilot. This is a budget that relies on regressive revenue measures like parking meters and ticketing instead of looking at alternatives directed at making the wealthy pay. We're voting on a budget that includes promises without plans, plans without personnel or metrics, or ways to hold our agencies accountable in their execution. If a budget is a statement of values, this budget process reflects that we don't regard mutual respect or collaboration as a value. And the budget itself reflects that we don't regard transparency, a fundamental element of good governance and accountable government administration, as values. It also has highlighted that the council, unless it transforms itself, is a hostage to the executive branch who treats the council as a temporary transactional inconvenience. We can talk about some wins, but in the old school transactional method of scoring political points, but these are not wins, especially in the context of this historical moment where we have an opportunity to create a new path, a new paradigm.
It's a pretty stark contrast from Alderman Burnett's remarks. She talked about the administration holding the council hostage and viewing the council as a temporary transactional inconvenience.
Yeah, it's really hard to argue with anything Alderwoman Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez said. And by the way, one more time, she'll be our guest tonight at First Tuesday with Peter Cunningham. And so you will be hearing more of her view of the world, her progressive view of the world. This is, she's a member of the Socialist Caucus in the Chicago City Council. She's an unapologetic progressive. She doesn't want to back down. And she thinks that this is a moment, in this critical moment, where the city should be imposing taxes on the wealthy, the people who can most afford to pay it, in order to support programs for the people hardest hit by the pandemic. So they, and to have initiatives that really confront the issue of police brutality in black neighbors. That's what it's all about for the progressive wing of the Chicago City Council. And this budget really doesn't do much in that area on any of those fronts, Dave, to address those, those values of the progressive caucus. Well, I should say the Socialist Caucus, because it's gonna get really complicated. We have so many caucuses now in the city of Chicago. So I don't know how I could argue with anything she says. This is why I'm saying this is a very traditional budget. It's a punt budget. It's a budget that's crafted in order not to offend the wealthiest people in the city of Chicago. It's a budget intended to minimize the property tax. We're gonna have a lot of conversation, I think, about the property tax coming up. And my guess is you play some other excerpts of people who oppose the property tax hike. So it's a very traditional, conventional budget. That's why I said I, I have a hard time really believing the 21 people who voted no, except for the progressives, except for the radicals, the lefties. You know what I'm saying? There, there's a principal reason why they're against this budget. If you're against this budget because of a $94 million tax hike, you're being very inconsistent with how you voted in the past. That's all I'll say. So Dave, I have a hard time really criticizing anything she said because I think it's very accurate.
Well, some of her progressive colleagues disagreed with that. Dennis, we're gonna do Haddon next. And one of the things that Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez talked about was the amount of money in this budget for something that falls under the general rubric of violence prevention. So the administration puts millions of dollars into things like funding for things that we know of as violence interrupters. They also funded what's called a co-responder model. And this has been in the news a lot recently, where advocates for this type of violence prevention mechanism allows for calls to 911 for situations where people are perhaps mentally disturbed or in dire need, are not responded to by police, but are responded to by social service or medical professionals. Or in the co-responder model, police accompany those professionals. And there's money in this budget for that. And that was enough to sway some of the quote progressive, unquote, votes in the council. And one of them we're going to hear is from Alderman Maria Haddon of the 49th Ward on the city's north side. And let's hear what she had to say.
Alderman Maria Haddon. This budget is not a reflection of what Chicagoans need and deserve. This is not a people's budget, and the process we followed is not one that faithfully incorporated the input of the people of this city. I won't pretend this budget reflects the values that our administration and city council claims to hold. I'm voting I because that was the cost of a non-law enforcement mental health response model being included in the pilot for this year. Movement leaders have led on treatment, not trauma, and I believe that this opens a pathway, a necessary pathway, for progress to them. Many of my residents have expressed disappointment and anger towards this budget. I stand by my decision because I know that I'll keep fighting for the bigger structural changes we must see, but couldn't achieve this time. But I do feel it's my duty to share the views of 49th Ward residents, many of whom are outraged to see another budget presented to them that is so out of line with our values and out of sync with our needs. Madam President, my esteemed colleagues, our residents don't trust us. They hear us say one thing and they watch us do another.
Now, there's an example of making sure there's a message delivered with the yes vote.
Yes. And by the way, Maria Haddon said just as forcefully exactly what Rosanna said, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, there's really no difference, other than the yes and the no vote, there was really no difference in the substance of their criticism.
But Haddon said that her yes vote was essentially a quid pro quo for getting this co-responder model funded. So somebody cut a deal with her that they were not able to cut with Rodriguez Sanchez.
Well, just so I cut a deal. I mean, you sound like me.
Well, I am talking to you.
Let's cut a deal. So like.
Well, she admitted it.
Yeah. Well, she didn't say we cut a deal. It's like what I would say. Cut a deal usually means, oh, my good friend Rick Munoz was the master of cutting a deal. Ben, here's how we're going to do this thing. So I'm going to vote for the budget, but I'm going to get something for this. Oh, yeah. And so you like, I don't know, you get some Tiff money for a community center or something. You know what I mean? You get something very specific. So the deal that Maria Haddon cut, she cut a deal, was in the larger venue of providing social service, the co-responder model.
And city-wise?
She got the city to agree to that. She got the mayor to agree to that. But the point I was making is that the substance of her critique of the budget is no different, by and large, from Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez. It's not a progressive budget. It's not a budget that reflects the values that we ran on, and that's absolutely true. Lori Lightfoot did not run on a budget that would increase money for the police department. And she did not run on a budget that would put a greater onus on fees and fines. As I recall, she ran on, when she was running as a candidate, she very much argued against red light cameras and using monies like that to fund government. But this, so this is more of a regressive budget. Now, you can make the argument that these are dire times and our, our options are limited by the pandemic. You can make that argument. It's a compelling argument to make in the middle of the pandemic. But you cannot with a straight face say that this is a progressive budget because it's a very regressive budget, in my humble opinion. It's like a Rahm budget. It's just, it's like more, the same thing Rahm did. And what Maria Haddon is saying is I got this concession and it's not enough, but it's enough for me as a good faith to exchange it for my yes vote so that she increases to 29. Because the budget would have passed without Maria Haddon's yes vote. Isn't that correct, young Dave? And so instead of 28, it's 29. So it makes Lori Lightfoot feel bad.
Well, you know, they didn't know, the administration didn't know how many people would then not vote for the other ordinances, right? They had to have at least a comfortable margin.
They needed 25 votes. Yes, go ahead.
I understand. Yeah, I think you put your finger on this point, or the reason, reasoning behind this point that the people don't, our residents don't trust us. I think it has to do, that statement has to do with what you said around the pledges by candidate Lightfoot about what sources of revenue and which ways to get income that perhaps are not reflected in this budget. Dennis, we're going to do Rosa next. And just to have a, a identification of what those possible sources are, we're going to next listen to Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa of the 35th Ward on the Northwest Side. And let's listen.
The audio is loading at the moment. David, you're doing a great job. Love this segment.
I like your voice, actually.
Oh, mine.
I, while the, while it's loading, let me just say this. Maria Haddon, 49th Ward, Rogers Park, Far North Side of Chicago. She was elected in the, for first time in 2019, she defeated Joe Moore, who was the longtime incumbent up there. And Joe started off, this is sort of like a little lesson in Chicago history. He started off every bit much of an independent rabble-rouser to the left that Maria Haddon is. And then over time, he moved steadily toward the right in the local level, became more of, more of a mayoral loyalist until he was of the Walter Burnett persuasion. And he would get up and extol the virtues of a mayor. What a great mayor and what a great budget. And I know there are naysayers out there who will say more money for progressive causes. We all want progressive causes. We all believe in progressive causes, but where is that money? You've not identified any sources of that money. Our mayor has worked tirelessly and valiantly to find a fair and equitable way to fund the programs we need. Is it perfect? No. But what is perfect, Dave Glowetz? Is your bicycle perfect? No. Some tires have more air in them than other tires. That's my Joe Moore imitation. And so then he ends up voting for the mayor's budget and then he goes, thank you, Mayor. I have seen you work tirelessly. I have seen that light on in your bedroom at four in the morning.
Wait, wait, what's he doing there outside of his bedroom? What do you know that I don't?
And before Joe Moore was Bernie Stone. There are those who say, there are those who say, you liberals.
Uh-oh. Hang tight, everybody.
We're going to get a bloody start impression.
50th Ward, Joey Moore is the 49th Ward, their council meetings. And in those days, Joe Moore was the radical. And Bernie would sit there and go, you're an idiot. Why are you reading those Benjerovski columns? Come on over to our side. And Joe goes, you're right. I like what you're saying, Bernie. Forget Benjerovski and Dave Glowetz and Dr. D. He's just a pothead anyway. I'm going to be calm.
Which one of us are you talking about?
I just wanted, yeah, which one did? Anyway.
Well, let's listen, let's listen to Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa.
Okay.
Never went on this program. Here we go.
Ramirez Rosa. Last Monday, I asked 35th Ward residents to respond to a brief survey, asking their thoughts on the 2021 budget proposal we are voting on today. Of survey respondents that identify as 35th Ward residents, 92% did not support this budget's property tax hike scheme. That overwhelming majority wanted our city to pursue alternatives. What alternatives? 62% wanted to cut CPD's 1.7 billion dollar budget. Another 10% would maybe support such cuts. 74% wanted to see a new tax on Amazon warehouses and other package distribution centers. 61% wanted to draw a larger amount from our 900 million rainy day fund. 71% wanted to see our city pursue payment in lieu of taxes from large landholding nonprofits. 63% wanted to see a more aggressive Tiff surplus. And 71% supported raising the real estate transfer tax for properties that sell for over $1 million. I know that some of my colleagues are voting yes under duress today. Arms were twisted, threats were made. I know some of my colleagues are voting yes because of concessions won by the Black Caucus, Latino Caucus, and Progressive Caucus. While I'm proud of the concessions we've won and progress we've made, I know that if we had stood together and held out just a little bit longer, we could have protected our wards' working families from the harm of yet another property tax hike.
Dennis, we're going to do Sigcho next.
Irenzis Lopez.
Well, yeah, you're, you're leading the witness here. One of the things I want to point out around Alderman Ramirez Rosa's comments is he talked about the rainy day fund. So this is, as it sounds like, it's a fund that currently reportedly is around $900 million that the city has to, to use to dip into in case of emergencies. And so some argue that this is an emergency situation. But the city decided in the 2021 budget to use only $30 million of that rainy day fund. So Ramirez Rosa is talking about the fact that, hey, you know, why not? Why not go for more? You know, if it's our rating now, you know? But the administration's comeback is that, well, you think it's rating now. It's probably going to get worse in 2021, and so we have to be careful. Also, one of the things that the city has to look at is how much it costs to borrow money, with their interest rates for borrowing money, and the city borrows a lot of money. And one of the things that affects the amount of interest that the city must pay is its rating as, you know, sort of a good fiduciary manager of its revenues. And this idea of how much money is sitting in reserve has a big impact on that. And we're going to listen to someone who is going to tell us about that in a second. But do you have any comments about Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
Well, now we're getting into the heart of alternatives and alternatives to the property tax hike. And I'm holding off on my discourse on the property tax until we get to some of the other aldermen that I think are coming up. Although since we didn't do any pre-show planning and we're totally improvising, I don't know what you have up your sleeve.
That is correct, Senator.
Okay. So I'm going to hold off on that. And I will say this is an age-old battle in Chicago. And Carlos Ramirez Rosa is the dean of the Socialist in the City Council. He was, used to be the only socialist in the council, and now there were five others. So that, because he's, has a longer tenure, they call him the dean, so he gets to be the dean. But I've heard, he's picking up a theme that had been echoed, that he's echoing like Rick Munoz used to say this. Joe Moore used to say these things. Tony Preckwinkle way, way, way back during the daily years would say similar things. Always looking for alternatives. These are people who are generally left of center. Always looking for alternatives to conventional property taxes to fund government. Maybe Tony Preckwinkle wasn't such a champion now that I think about it. But this is a refrain that's been really common in the last seven or eight years since the progressive movement has taken hold in the Chicago City Council. And it always runs into naysayers from the mayor's office. And so Lori Lightfoot's naysayers are no different than Rahm Emanuel's naysayers or Mayor Richard Daley's naysayers. You can't do it. You need legislative approval in Springfield. Springfield's a mess. We can't get that approval. It's so funny. I mean, they, they just don't want to try. That's the reality. I mean, when they, they wanted a casino in Springfield, out of Springfield, they got, Mayor Lori Lightfoot went down to Springfield and cut a deal, to use Dave's term, and got a casino. Yeah, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so that casino is not going to be operating anytime soon. But the point is, where there's a will, there's a way. And there was never been a will to implement these progressive ideas. And so it's just a constant refrain with people by Carlos Ramirez Rosa and then other. And this is what gets frustrating. This is what Maria Haddon was getting at, Dave. Other people pick up on the refrain. Lori Lightfoot picked up on the refrain. If you watch City So Real, the documentary about the 2019 mayoral race, you will hear almost every candidate, other than Bill Daley and maybe Paul Vallas, and maybe Jerry Chico, the three conventional out-of-corporate Chicago candidates saying, we need to be more progressive. We need to be less regressive. We have to look at ways of giving a break to our poorest people and our middle, our struggling middle class or working class. You know, people say that when they run, and then as soon as they get elected, oh, that's too unrealistic. You old hippie, shut up. And so when I hear Carlos, I'm just hearing it, hearing it echo, Dave, of things I've heard from left-of-center aldermen for many years.
Dennis, I changed my mind. I want to do Vasquez next. The thing that you talked about, Ben, in terms of the ability of so-called progressive aldermen over the years to persuade the administrations in crafting their budget to consider progressive forms of revenue is very interesting to me. There's some debate, I think, on the council on whether it's even possible to work with the administration in terms of how much ability, how much heft do these aldermen have compared to the administration itself? I mean, are they on a level playing field in terms of competence, in terms of ability? And I want to turn now to one of the self-described democratic socialists on the city council, Andre Vasquez of the 35th Ward.
40th.
Sorry? Sorry, 40th, yes, 40th Ward. I stand corrected. Who is, he was the only, you can't tell if I'm standing or sitting. The only self-described democratic socialist on the council to vote yes for the budget. Let's hear what he had to say.
Alderman Vasquez. I am voting yes reluctantly, not because of any intimidation by the executive branch, not as an abandonment of the principles that I share with those colleagues and comrades who wanted to see true progressive revenue options. Our restaurant, hotel, airport, and other industries whose taxes fund our city government have been decimated by COVID. In addition, our public transportation and public event revenue is a fraction of what we could typically expect to generate, and we don't know when those revenues will return, if ever. I began looking at this budget within that context. This wasn't a budget in which my focus was about what I wanted to achieve, but about what the city needs to survive in the immediate. That required the work and research to dig into the problem and identify what could be done. It led to the discovery that this council is not adequately equipped or resourced itself to truly make the case for the alternatives that could be implemented. Part of my decision included a commitment from the administration to work together to create budget working groups of alders to commence at the start of the year so that this government can function for the people it serves, and so we never have to be in this position again. When this budget was introduced, it brought together a coalition of the Black, Latino, and progressive caucuses to negotiate for a stronger, better budget. With the help of our partners in labor, such as the CFL and grassroots organizers, we stopped 350 layoffs of Black and Brown city workers. We minimized the furloughs. We separated the welcoming city ordinance from the budget vote. We increased funding for violence prevention programs that don't rely on police to the tune of 36 million. And we wrote into law the first ever non-law enforcement mental health response model in Chicago as part of a pilot. To Mayor Lightfoot's credit, he was open to discussions. He came to the table. He negotiated and accepted changes that were not in the initial budget proposal. I personally made calls directly to our mayor, unlike some, to communicate that I wasn't a default no and what we needed to engage and communicate to find solutions together. It was grueling and tense at many points, but the negotiations continued and we found agreement. I will always make the difficult choice for the city rather than saying, I don't like anything in a budget and saying no before even looking at it. Finally, I want this council and this city to remember that last year, when a coalition of mostly Black and Brown alders voted no on the 2020 budget, we were publicly targeted by a custom-built campaign website. I do not expect that we will see the same treatment of some of the committee chairs and other powerful, privileged white aldermen this year who are relying on the votes of myself and many of my Black and Brown colleagues to pass a budget. Committee budgets have not been slashed. Those alders will still continue to enjoy staff, support, and control over the legislative process, and those imbalances are part of the problem.
There are a couple of things I'd like to pick out of what Alderman Vasquez.
Many things, yeah.
One is the, this issue of his discovery, as I mentioned earlier, that the council isn't equipped to sort of do budget proposals as well as the mayor's staff is. And then there's this other thing about. And then there's this other thing about Alderman being targeted for voting no. Where would you like to start, Ben?
Well, I could do both. I'll start with the city council not being equipped. And and this is, I always say this, I've been around so long, everything is an echo of something I heard before. And when I'm listening to Andre Vasquez on the floor, Alderman of the 40th Ward, newly elected democratic socialist in his second year, his second budget, I'm reminded of Amea Poirier, my dear friend from the 47th Ward. Amea used to tell me. I used to have many discussions with him. I'm just laughing because it would like, he would be talking. I'm thinking, Maia, you think this thing is legit? You think this freaking thing? So Maia would be go, Ben, all we need, I love you, Maia, I'm just, I don't mean to laugh at your ideas. All we need is a budget analyst in the Chicago City. That's all we need. Remember how hard he fought? I think it was like a city council budget analyst sometime. Then they they fought over who would be the budget analyst and Mayor Rahm. This is so classic. Like, Amea said, I'll vote for your budgets and your TIFs and all your slimy deals if you give us money in the budget for an analyst in the city council to analyze the budgets. And Mayor Rahm said, okay. And then Mayor Rahm said, I want to choose that person. Like, what? Why, what? To quote Pat Whelan. So, oh, wait, is it, wait, what? Anyway, doesn't matter. The point is, so now Andre's saying, I got an agreement. Here we are, what, 10 years later or eight years later? I got an agreement for the mayor. We're going to have a working group with the mayor on budget stuff. All right, Andre, I hope it works out a little bit better than it worked with Mayor Rahm. Because here's the reality. I hate to be the naysayer, and maybe I'll be wrong this time. But it's not in the mayor's interest to share information with aldermen. They, information is power in the city of Chicago. If you hold on to that information, then you control what people know about the city. And you're the one leaking out, you make them beg for the information. File Freedom of Information Act request. Dave Glowatz filing one letter after another with the Department of Planning. Please show me the documents that you should have put on your freaking website in the first place. Like, that consumes like how many months of our time? So no, Andre, I do not believe the mayor will work with you anymore than I believe, didn't believe that the mayor would work with Amea Poirier. And it was a different mayor, it was a different alderman, and these relationships stay the same. The other point that he made, I don't know if you saw that, unlike some who are just automatic no votes. That's a little dig, little dig, subtle dig. Did you notice that, Dave?
I did. And I just, I'm really curious who he's talking about. It implies, or I infer, that he means that this budget recommendation was dead on arrival for some who like, like would not, like, he is, he is sort of castigating those who would not get into dialogue, as I read it, with the mayoral administration.
Well, here's, here's, here's the reality. And this is the bias against the left that exists in the city of Chicago. There is a bias against the left that is so pronounced. I see it all the time. And this is it. Just think about this. So he's obviously alluding to his fellow socialist caucus members like Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez or Carlos Ramirez Rosa or Byron Sigcho Lopez. And Matt Martin from the 47th Ward, my alderman. He's obviously alluding to them, like, they're automatic no votes. Maybe I wouldn't put Matt in that position. I don't know what it, they're automatic no votes. Like, they're just ideologues who don't, aren't pragmatists. You can't work with them. All they want to do is embarrass the mayor and work against the mayor and defeat the mayor. But I'm a little different than them. I'm reaching out to the mayor, and I'm not a default no vote. But if, so that's how lefties are viewed. But if you're one of the group of aldermen who voted no because you're against a property tax hike, if you're one of them like Brendan Riley, 42nd Ward voted no. A centrist, democratic centrist actually endorsed the Republican candidate for state attorney. Yeah, so you're even beyond centrist. You're like on the right side. You're like a Joe Manchin Democrat in the city of Chicago. If you're Matt O'Shea from the 19th Ward, you know, if you're Anthony Napolitano in the 41st Ward, you vote no, Jim Gardner, the 45th Ward, you vote no for property, you're not an ideologue. You're not a default no. No, you're, you're standing up for the property tax payers in Chicago. So it's an interesting contrast. The city of Chicago is dedicated to undercutting a left-of-center movement. Dave Glowatz, you know this as well as I do. You've been following this stuff as long as I have. They always want to demonize the left and trivialize the left and malign the left because it's a threat. Like, guys like Carlos would get up, talk about taxing the rich. They're a threat to the pocketbooks of the well-to-do in Chicago.
I'm really curious whether he was, in fact, trying to paint all those people that you named. And I'm curious because I suspect that one or more of those democratic socialists, those other democratic socialists, at least had some contact with the mayor's staff or the people who work for what's called Intergovernmental Affairs, IGA. Well, we know that she, we know that she had collaboration. But, you know, the likes of, say, Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez, you know, I could totally see her. This is just my impression of her. I could totally see her trying to collaborate. So I'm just, I really will never know unless we ask Mr. Vasquez.
I think all of them. I know all these people. I know, I've known Carlos since he was a kid, and he ran for office. So they're looking to cut deals like everybody else.
So that's why I think it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's like.
Let's go back to, let's go back to this other point about.
Well, that's a great point.
Let's go back, let's go back to this other point around the council being equipped. So you, you sort of poo-pooed this deal that Mr. Vasquez says that he cut to have these budget working groups, which I'll point out was a similar deal that was cut around the pandemic budget. That some aldermen who were on the pandemic expense working group that was carved out of the budget committee got weekly briefings by the budget staff about how they were hanging out with or how they were dealing with pandemic expenses. So this seems like it was modeled on that. So I'm imagining going forward, this sort of parallel process where, as you said, the administration has all this information. Are they going to start sharing it? And there's going to be this sort of group, sort of consensus emerge. But conspicuous by its absence, to me, is the other thing that you mentioned, was this budget analyst role created years ago at the behest of former Alderman Poirier. And that is a city agency called the Council Office of Financial Analysis, abbreviated, abbreviated COFA. COFA has three staff people, a director and two analysts. A year ago this time, for a long time before that, there was only one person. The analyst on the director position was open. And about this time last year, the COFA organization, that analyst and the other person who was working there, they actually put out a bunch of documentation that was publicly available. You could go to the city's website where they analyzed the city's budget. That is not present this year, even though they've hired a director and they have two analysts on board. There's, there's been no updates to the COFA website since last year. You could look at all the last year's stuff, but you can't find anything here. So Vasquez doesn't even talk about that. There's, there's no talk about that. I tried to get from COFA what they recommended to the city council members in writing, and I have so far been unable to get that. They won't respond. So that's an interesting sort of omission right there.
That's a good point. And and I say this in all respect to like Dave Glowatz and Mick Dumke and Danny Moappolis and all these reporters who file these FOIA requests. And they just send you down the labyrinth. They keep you running around in a circle. It's not like they don't give this stuff up easy. They don't want you to know. It's like, if they wanted you to know, then your like tax bills wouldn't lie about something as fundamental as the TIF program. They don't want you to know. It's just like, like borrowing money. Like, the city is now going to repackage some of their loans and borrow more money. You just, as you just said, I think it's $501 million. I'm doing this off the top of my head. I don't know if this is, you have a clip on this one? Well, where's the analysis of how much that's going to contribute to our property tax bill? You know, where's the analysis of what, what the annual, like, how much that breaks down to? What, what programs are going to lose out because of that? I mean, they don't want you to know. They just say things like, well, we're going to be more efficient with our loan programs, and that's going to save money. So thank you, Mayor Lori Lightfoot. Huh? What? Okay.
Yeah, let's listen to an alderman who makes that very point. Dennis, we're going to do Beal next. But I want to close off on Alderman Vasquez with one of the last things he said. He talked about people who voted no on Mayor Lightfoot's first budget being targeted by a campaign website where apparently her campaign organization put it up. And he speculated that some of the sort of mainstream aldermen that voted no this time would not be targeted similarly. And let's, let's perhaps infer who he's talking about. Some of the no votes were Alderman Tom Tonney of the 44th Ward on the North Side, who is the chair of the powerful zoning committee. Matt O'Shea of the 19th Ward on the South Side, who is chair of the aviation committee. And Alderman Harry Osterman of the 48th Ward on the North Side, who is the chair of the housing committee, three white guys, I'll add. And we don't have audio of their comments, but Ben, perhaps you could tell our listeners why it's notable that these, these white guys voted no.
All right. And to that list, I would add Brendan Riley of the 42nd Ward, who's the deputy mayor, vice mayor, whatever they call it. Yeah, so he gets to wield the gavel when the mayor's not available for a city council meeting. I don't know if that's ever happened in the virtual era, but yeah.
When the mayor's gone to the washroom.
Well, yeah, or sometimes like Rahm, I think Rahm would just say to Danny Solis, I know you love doing this. I think I'm going to get a corned beef sandwich at Manny's. You just run the meeting for a while. And Danny, no, I think it was Daley, I get them, hold the gavel. Oh, wow, the gavel. But so, yeah, I mean, I just wrote a column about this, so this is fresh in my mind. These, all these aldermen that Dave mentioned, Harry Osterman of the 48th Ward in Edgewater, Tommy Tonney of the 44th Ward in Lakeview, and Matt O'Shea from the 19th Ward down in Beverly. They voted no, Brendan Riley in the 42nd Ward, and they're, they chair committees. Brendan Riley's the vice chair, so vice mayor. So they have powerful positions. And in the old days, would you chair a committee? There was an expectation by the mayor that you would vote with the mayor and that you would be the mayor's ally. And that's, that's how the mayor kept on power. And so.
Let's point out to our listeners that the way that these, these guys got to be committee chairs is they were in defiance of expectation of anyone who, say, dropped in from Mars and looked at this. They were appointed by the mayor instead of being appointed by their own fellow council member.
Well, they're not literally appointed by the mayor, but the point you're making is a very good one. We have it all the time on this show with Mick Dumke. It's one of his favorites. Is that they're, they're elected by their cohorts, but they're selected by the mayor. So the mayor says, I want, here's what I'm going to do. She'll call him in. She'll say, Harry Osterman, will you be my ally? I'll put you in charge of housing. Yes, yes, Madam Mayor. And then the council ratifies it.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. It's nice to be elected and selected.
Yes. And it's so, it's, I think it's absolutely the wrong way to do things. The legislative branch should be its own independent entity from the executive branch. We should have checks and balances. And I agree with Mick. This is outrageous.
But isn't it interesting that they still are able to exercise their independence in this case?
Well, yes. It's a sign that much has changed in the city of Chicago with the mayor. This, I just wrote this, that the, like, if you're Harry Osterman, you realize that you're safer in your seat as alderman than Lori Lightfoot is in her position as mayor, and she can't punish you. She can't. I've argued for a while, you know this, Dave, you've heard me on this subject for years and years. I've argued that the mayor can't punish you anyway. If you're Tom Tonney, Tom Tonney's been alderman of the 44th Ward, which is in Lakeview, on the North Side of Chicago. Think Greeley Field, ladies and gentlemen. That's the 44th Ward. He's been the alderman of that ward since I want to say, don't quote me in this day, but 2003, which is a long time. He was appointed by Mayor Daley, then he got reelected. He was an ally of Daley, he was an ally of Rahm, and he's an ally of Lori Lightfoot. He will never lose. He will have quit and retired and moved to Florida. And 44th Ward voters, as loyal as sheep, will be going, where's Tonney's name on the ballot? I want to vote for, they love him. They love the senator.
Is there an Ed Sather's in Florida?
Well, you know, he'll just be cashing checks for Ed Sather's. The point is, he'll never lose. He had never had a reason to be a loyal flunky to Daley or Rahm. They couldn't touch him. But now, apparently, in the new age of Lori Lightfoot, he's realized that. So he voted for all those dumb TIF deals that raise your property taxes. He voted for the parking meter deal, one of the worst deals in the history of Chicago. He voted for all of Mayor Daley's budgets and Mayor Rahm's budgets, but now suddenly he filed independence. I guess he's come to the conclusion that Lori Lightfoot can't beat him. And who knows if she's even going to survive the next reelection battle, whoever runs against her. So he's free to vote what he wants. And same thing with Matt O'Shea down in Beverly. So yeah, Lori Lightfoot's not going to, I don't think she's going to threaten them or kick. I don't think she has the votes to do so anyway.
So far, I haven't seen any indication that these people have been threatened. But I do have here a full-page ad from the Chicago Tribune on November 30th that says, thank you, Mayor Lori Lightfoot and Chicago City Council members who stood with working people and approved the 2021 City of Chicago budget. It lists all the aldermen who voted yes, and this was paid for by the Chicago Federation of Labor. So sort of the, taking the opposite tack, instead of, you know, browbeating those who voted no. It's a big full page, pat on the back from the CFL. Ben, you get some money from CFL, don't you?
Yes, Bob Ryder, a good friend of Ben Chirovsky, from the moment I was fired by WCPT. And he also took that ad out in the Sun Times. Just want to let you know, David. There was also a full-page ad in the Sun Times.
It's bigger than the Tribune.
Well, yeah, it's only because the paper's longer. But anyway, the Chicago Federation of Labor's attitude in this budget is that Lori Lightfoot should be commended for saving 350 jobs. And their argument is that without Lori Lightfoot raising the taxes and rounding up the 29 votes that they needed to pass the budget, it would be even worse. And I've heard this argument from aldermen as well, that, that Mayor Lightfoot needed, follow me on this one, David. Mayor Lightfoot needed 25. That's all she needed, but she wanted the 26, so she didn't have to vote. So say 26. She needed those 26 votes to pass it. And the reality is, if she couldn't get the 26 votes for, from, to raise the property taxes, she would have to go in the other direction to get the votes and try to win over a Tommy Tonney or to try to win over a Matt O'Shea or try to win over a Harry Osterman. And that would mean cut property taxes, and that would mean lay people off. And so this is the argument that this is the best possible budget you can get under the circumstances of the pandemic. And I'm open to that to a certain degree because I realize that this is a unique situation. And that we are we're at a loss. I'm just thinking of all the businesses that have been shuttered, so all the revenue that's not coming in. So yes, hands are tied. And so I'm open to that argument, that she would have gone to the right, if you will. Andre Vasquez is going to bring him on the show in about a week or so, Dave, and he's going to guarantee he will make this argument on this show, okay? That if he and Maria Haddon had not joined forces with those other aldermen, the Walter Burnett's of the world, who are always mayoral loyalists, to help Lori Lightfoot pass a budget, she would have cut a deal with the Tom Tonneys and the Matt O'Shees of the world and the Jim Gardners of the world and the Anthony Napolitanos of the world. And they would have lowered property taxes and cut those jobs. So that's their argument that they make. Is it enough to have gotten me to vote for this budget?
While you're thinking of that, let's listen to a person who points out the amount of indebtedness that we're, that's going to result from this sort of backflips around the budget. And this is Alderman Anthony Beal of the South Side 9th Ward.
Alderman Beal.
Last year's budget was a budget of hope that we would get money from the ambulance reimbursement fund. Last year's budget was a budget of hope that we would get money from the ambulance reimbursement fund to the tune of 163, 164 million. We didn't come anywhere close to that. We had a hope that we would get the real estate transfer tax passed in Springfield. We didn't get that. We also hoped that we would get the casino, which we did. But I guarantee you, we will not see a casino built in this city in this term. Right now, we are 0 for 3 as it relates to getting relief for our taxpayers. And now we resort to property taxes. Now we have the largest scoop and toss in the city of Chicago's history. This is what I call scoop and toss on steroids. We are borrowing and refinancing $1.7 billion to kick the barrel down the road, not the can. We are now borrowing $15 million in order to avert the layoffs. We could have found some structural changes in order to obtain that. But when we look to borrow more money in order to make ends meet, it's not sustainable. In my opinion, this has been the least transparent budget I've ever seen. The commissioners didn't answer half of our questions. Every question we had to get through the chair because they refused to answer the questions. I don't know if that was by design or if that was just not knowing the answers to our questions.
That last point that Alderman Beal is making is that there were a bunch of hearings organized by the Budget Committee where every department had had to sit and be grilled by aldermen about anything. You know, it was ostensibly about the budget, but there were some very interesting sort of going into the weeds just about department operations that went on. And Beal is claiming that many times when aldermen asked department heads questions, they didn't have an immediate answer. And the protocol for that is to say, we'll get back to you. And the way they get back to you is that their staff will dig up the answer and then give it to the committee chair, who in this case is usually 3rd Ward Alderman Pat Dowell, who is the Budget Committee Chair. And then the chair distributes it to the committee members. But I've heard over the years that quite often, according to people I've spoken with, nothing happens. They simply just don't get back or the chair doesn't distribute them. But he's making this point that you raised earlier, Ben, as about how much more indebtedness this budget creates. And one of them is this so-called scoop and tossing where essentially the city is refinancing its debt to get lower interest rates, but it extends the debt. Some estimate in this case is for as long as eight years. The city ends up paying many more millions of dollars. And around this issue about avoiding the layoffs, I don't know if you've seen the reports about how they justify that, but they're getting money by essentially issuing weed bonds. So their city taxes, the sale of cannabis and cannabis sales have been pretty brisk. And so they're essentially estimating how much income is going to be gotten from city taxes on weeds because the city can impose its own taxes.
I don't know if that was passed in this budget. I think they may have dropped that. We talked about that in the show extensively.
I'm pretty sure it's.
The role that Anthony Beal is playing is very similar to the one, we've talked about this in the past, that Scott Wagasback used to play. Now he is part of the Lori Lightfoot team. And so he's a finance chair. So he's not playing that role anymore. And I, I appreciate Anthony Beal for playing that role. Rayman Lopez also plays that role. We've talked about his. They're like an alliance. They just don't like Lori Lightfoot. So I just put them in the category. They don't like, she just rubs them the wrong way. Because this is the reality. Everything he's said about Lori Lightfoot and the budget could have been said about Mayor Rahm and budgets and could have been said about Mayor Richard Daley and the budget. In fact, it was said by the Scott Wagasbacks of the world. You know, they're disingenuous. They're making projections that are absolutely favorable to their cause of saying it's a balanced budget, knowing full well that they may not come true. Knowing full well that, let's say, a real estate transfer tax that you're anticipating won't occur because you don't get approval from the state. Knowing that the casino, the revenues you're expecting won't come in because you don't have the casino built in time. And then, you know, the pretense that a scoop and toss is somehow a brilliant fiduciary move that's saving taxpayers money. Of course, that's a lie. Of course, it's going to cost you more money. You're just borrowing more money. So everything he's saying is accurate. But the reality is this, it was equally accurate when the Scott Wagasbacks of the world said it about Rom and Daley.
So it's interesting. You're talking.
He didn't say boo back then about he voted for all those budgets.
Talking about that the arguments have remained the same. Oh, Dennis, we're going to do Kapelman next. You're saying that the arguments have remained the same, but the people making them have changed depending on who has recruited them, which mayor has recruited them for what purpose? So that, so that says that these, these arguments are sort of evergreen, you know?
Yes, evergreen. They will endlessly be rebirthing every year, every budget.
Well, here's, here's another perspective on why people might oppose. You know, we have this hypothesis that you and I have hatched here or that you hatched, that there's sort of an evergreen set of objections that articulate the progressive perspective. But there's another perspective that I found very interesting, which was made by Alderman James Kapelman of the North Side 46th Ward. And let's listen to what he had to say.
Alderman Kapelman, to be clear, this was a budget where the reaction to it was more generational in nature. The more visceral responses were often from those who identify as millennials and Generation Z. Given they are the first generation that is destined to be worse off than their parents. And along with all the other terrible issues affecting our planet, their anger is justifiable. Today's task is focused on getting a working budget for the city of Chicago. But our task tomorrow is to bring needed healing to those who are experiencing intense emotional pain. It may be hard to see their wounds because they cover them up with anger and for some with the use of shaming tactics. Social media feeds on it and does more to divide than unite. Nevertheless, we must move forward together to build trust with each other. For without that trust, polarization grows while our democracy breaks down. Authoritarianism quickly moves in to fill that vacuum. And that's dangerous. It's extraordinarily dangerous.
He's got the preacher in him, doesn't he?
Oh, wow. I don't know where to begin with that. Other than.
He's playing the age card. I thought that was really interesting.
I, I don't know what to say. I'm an old fogey. I've been saying the same thing about Chicago budgets forever. Okay? And, and by the way, I want to say most of those no votes were not millennials. I mean, Carlos is a millennial, but Brendan Riley's not a millennial. Tommy Tony's not a millennial. You know, Matt O'Shea is not a millennial. See, this again, they're like, this is that thing where they vilify the left. Always vilifying the left. And, and the objection that Beal made was not a progressive objection. That's what I call a good government objection. That you're not being transparent. You're not being honest. That's the Scott Wagasback kind of objection, a Marty Obermann type of objection. That's different than a progressive objection or a lefty objection. We heard that from Rosanna and Carlos. Those are two separate breeds in the city of Chicago. And so what Kapelman is trying to do in kind of like a, like a strange passive aggressive way is to diminish value of the argument that the Rosanas and Carloses are making about how cruel this budget is. Trivializing it like by saying it's like a tweet and saying like, he's the responsible one. It's like something very passive aggressive. You know what I'm saying? Like reducing them to the left wing version of Donald Trump. They're angry. And they go to Twitter and they're cut off and we should bring them in. They don't merit what they say.
It certainly is a unique perspective. It's not one that I had expected to hear. So.
I give credit for that.
Kudos to Kapelman for being original.
Although, again, Amea Poir was a step ahead of them. If you recall, in one debate, he accused all the lefties in the council of Tea Party tactics. Remember that? So there's really not that much difference between the two. Amea began it all. They're all reading from the Amea Poir book.
Well, Dennis, we're going to do Inspector next. So I've just got to, I'm going to do two more, Ben, before we close it off. And I want to bring up something that has been alluded to by, by some of these remarks. And that is the, the city's huge portion of the city's budget that is devoted to the Chicago Police Department. And some of the aldermen who voted no objected to the fact that that really hasn't been addressed, that there are these, they, they are unhappy that there are these relatively small carve outs for violence reduction programs on the order of, you know, a million here, a million there, tens of millions. But it doesn't really, the, the city hasn't really, according to these aldermen, addressed the, what some see as the inordinate, the disproportionate amount of resources that go into the police department. So I dug up this, this next bit from not the November 24th City Council meeting, but from one of the series of budget committee hearings of city departments that took place in the weeks prior. And what we're going to hear now is from Inspector General Joseph Ferguson, who was being grilled by aldermen just about his own department's budget. And in this case, he was asked a question about the consent decree by Alderman Harry Osterman of the 48th Ward. And let's listen.
How long do you expect us as a city to be in the consent decree with Police Department?
A long time. I'm concerned about where we are. The consent decree is a floor. It's not the ceiling. Make no mistake, everything that the consent decree requires will get done over the long haul, but it's years in the process. And at this moment, one of our biggest challenges is leadership and not leadership from the perspective that people who are eyeball deep in all of this aren't working their tails off and leading. But let's look at the infrastructure at the moment of what we have in the way of reform. The Deputy Mayor for Public Safety left in the last few weeks. The Chief Risk Officer, truly a marquee hiring, was first order of business related to police litigation, has left. The head of the Office of Constitutional Policing, somebody I know that many members of this body have great admiration for, Barb West, she stepped down recently. The civilian commission leg of the overall reform architecture that was recommended by the Police Accountability Task Force headed by the mayor and the Justice Department, that still doesn't exist three years after this body created and enacted the first stage of infrastructure accountability. All those pieces are missing. The Administrator of COPA is supposed to be selected by a civilian commission that doesn't even exist. And her term, which is an acting term, will run in the coming year. There have been some comments about my tenure and how long I last. And the public safety IG is tied to my term. All of these things, they're key to the overall architecture. And there are voids right now, or there are questions about their presence. All of this is a really complex backdrop while a new superintendent who came to the city without knowing the city, who's dealing with really, really significant challenges on the violent crime front and significant challenges relating to COVID. And then the political environment that we're in is still learning the city and the job. And so your question, how long is this going to take? We don't even have the infrastructure in place right now as we're doing the work. It's like trying to fix the airplane while it's in the air. It's really complicated. By way of another analogy, one thing that we see a lot these days in this entire realm is the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. Take that and apply it to an octopus. And that's where we are right now. It's going to take a while.
What a riff. I gotta give him credit. The octopus line. Oh, no, I'm so oppressed, Dave. I gotta have to, hold on, I gotta do some day drinking.
So again, the ramifications in terms of the budget is that the city, the police department is the largest parts of the city budget. As Ron would say, number one. Number two is that the city pays out, like over the last decade, has paid out hundreds of millions of dollars in settlements and judgments against police officers for misconduct. And in fact, it's even gone so far as to issue bonds to go into debt to pay some of these. So this, this effort to rein all this in falls under the, the general category of this federal consent decree that Ferguson was talking about, which mandates a series of reforms that, according to Ferguson, are in serious trouble.
Yeah, it was a very depressing recitation riff that Ferguson went on. Very impressive, I might say. That octopus metaphor really captured my imagination.
Stays with you, doesn't it? And it's like.
Yeah, a lot of arms to wrap around. And so, yeah. And see, this is, gets back to what Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez was saying. This is not a budget that reflects our values. So there's all these vacancies in important positions that would supposedly administer a new way of policing in the city of Chicago. There's just a fraction of the amount of money set aside to implement programs that would be like a new, like a deviation from the old way of doing business. You know, yeah, this budget is far from perfect as a statement of values, a statement of where the city should be heading, a statement expressing what so many people want to see.
What's funny to me about what he talked about is this, all these departures that he named. He didn't name names for the most part, but he talked about the Chief Risk Officer, who is a, a new position created, created by the mayor to rein in this judgment and settlement ongoing expense. Well, she, she apparently left out of the blue. Her name was, is Tamika Puckett. And she was standing up this system for analyzing when these misconduct cases occur to analyze, well, what are the systemic patterns and practices that need to be addressed, which hasn't been done in Chicago, but it is done in places like New York City. And he talked about the Deputy Mayor for Public Safety, who is the person in the mayor's office who is, is responsible for all this. Susan Lee, she left. She started in June of 2019. Well, he talked about the person in the police department, who was the head of Constitutional Policing and Reform, Barb West, she was appointed in January. She retired. But he even, didn't even mention that the person in the Inspector General's office, who is the Deputy Inspector General for Public Safety, they've gone through three of those now. They hired Laura Canard in 2017. She lasted six months. Joseph LaPerry, who lasted less than two years. And now he has a woman named Deborah Witsburg. So this is, I'm not sure what this, what, what's going on here, but the fact that all these people have rotated in and out the last few years, it's, there's something going on and it's worth looking into.
Well, it's a very frustrating, difficult challenge that they're facing to try to change a culture, a whole way of behaving in the city of Chicago. And that, there's not a lot of, there's a strong resistance to it. And I've had this debate with Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez and with other advocates and Carlos Ramirez Rosa, who want to defund the police. There's very strong resistance to that. And that's reality that my beloved lefties have to recognize that the defund the police movement will cause, stir much opposition. We'll be talking about this at the hideout tonight. There are those moderates in the Democratic Party who feel as though it's the kiss of death to embrace that as a movement. And so there's resistance, not only outside of Chicago, but inside Chicago. Those votes, those 21 votes were not just lefty voters who voted no, saying they don't like the the, the, the direction the city's going in, the values expressed by the budget. They also were votes of quote unquote moderates and, and people from MAGA wards who don't want property tax raised, don't want police defunded. And yet somehow or other want to maintain the status quo. And so in some ways, I would argue they're more irresponsible than any lefty. But it's still, the mayor has to deal with them. And the reality is this, that there would be an outcry, Dave, if the city were to move to defund the police in the way that Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez and Carlos Ramirez Rosa want them to. That's the reality. There would be much resistance and they'd all be saying, give up your cops. You don't want your cops, Carlos? We'll take your cops. And that's what we're up against. At the same time, the same people are saying that don't want to raise taxes to pay for the cops.
Well, if you, if you listen to Inspector General Ferguson, there's no danger of defunding the police anytime soon because of, because of the infrastructure. Dennis, we're going to do, we're going to do MASH next.
This is the last one, right?
This is the last one. I thought I put together a sort of mashup of different perspectives by a couple of folks who voted for the budget and against the budget. Some of the aldermen who we haven't heard from yet, we're going to listen to Alderman David Moore of the South Side 17th Ward. We're going to listen to Alderman Brian Hopkins of the 2nd Ward, which is sort of a, what is that shaped like? I've heard many different descriptions of it.
Snake or something.
And Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor of the 20th Ward on the South Side. And we'll hear, who else is in this one? I am looking for. I am looking for, I don't recall, but we'll, we'll find it. How are we doing, Dennis?
Hey, we're good. I got Moore, Taylor and Hopkins. You want to do those?
No.
Oh.
You ready?
Yep.
Let's hear it.
Here we go. Starting with Moore.
Alderman David Moore.
No, 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 no.
Cause I don't have a MASH one. I just have these separately. No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I could play them all at the same time.
You know what?
I don't know if that'll really go anywhere, though.
I, I think this is a good time to cut it. We're moving, we're running out of time, clearly run out of time. And I got a four o'clock interview on, got my eyeballs on, Dennis is going to drop this. So we'll save the MASH tape for a little while. I think we've covered all the bases. I just want to tell anybody, you want to hear Jeanette Taylor, she came on the show on Thursday, or we dropped that show Thursday, Thanksgiving Day. So check her out. She was outspoken in her no vote. And so, Dave, thank you very much. You went beyond the call of duty with this budget breakdown analysis. We covered all bases. I think we gave absolutely everyone an opportunity to speak their mind.
Thank you. Appreciate the, the opportunity. And if folks want to hear and see more about the Chicago City Council's budget, then go to chigov.com, that's C-H-I-G-O-V dot com, or look on Facebook at facebook.com/insidegov.
All right, very good. Thank you very much, David Glowetz. And Dr. D, you got any updates for us before we head out that door?
Absolutely, yeah. We didn't do our local news, so we're going to do the back, back half here. How much of this you want to do, man? I got quite a bit of news here.
Yeah, let's do about, you know, 20 minutes or so. Let's go.
Cool, cool. All right, let's find out what's happening in Chicago and/or Illinois lately. We begin in Illinois and we begin with the Illinois governor.
Springtime, love it.
It's winter, but whatever. Today, Illinois Governor JB Pritzker will be delivering his 2:30 COVID-19 update. He's already done it. It's three o'clock, all right? It was at the Thompson Center. Boy, you guys went on with that, that city council synopsis. Everybody enjoyed it, though, on the live stream chat. Yeah, but yeah, so he had his COVID-19 update. We're going to talk about that on tomorrow's program, all right? But hey, here's a quick update on Monday's press briefing. If you're hoping for some looser restrictions and pandemic mitigations in Illinois, well, keep dreaming. Because after his talk with the most famous infectious disease expert in America, yeah, Dr. Anthony Fauci, Governor Pritzker says tier three restrictions will remain in place in anticipation of a possible Thanksgiving surge. Isn't that right, Governor?
We are still very much in a precarious place. And we have got to take the time to evaluate any Thanksgiving effect before we make any premature adjustments.
But there's been a recent dip in numbers, though, right? I mean, what's about all that?
The dip in Illinois' cases over the last few days comes as we are seeing near record high numbers of hospitalizations, meaning that our ability to handle any new surge in COVID patients is still limited. If we are not especially careful right now, the surge will overwhelm our state's healthcare system.
Interesting. Pritzker also said about his talk with Fauci, quote, "I spoke with Dr. Fauci this morning to get his input about Illinois' situation." He said, "The massive numbers of indoor gatherings by people visiting family and friends across the nation will very likely bring a post Thanksgiving surge." And he believes this is no time to pull back on mitigations. In other statewide news, statewide news also involving COVID-19, Democratic Hillside State Rep and former guest on The Ben Jurovsky Show, Emmanuel Chris Welch has tested positive for COVID-19. For those who didn't know, Welch is also the chair of the Special State House Investigative Committee, looking into Speaker Michael Madigan's dealings with ComEd. You remember, guys, it was our fall time Illinois conservative political theater piece, Madigan Bad. Let's see here, Welch told The Sun-Times, "He started to feel symptoms Wednesday and felt something new," quote, "each day thereafter." And he was tested Saturday afternoon. His family has tested negative, but, quote, "We definitely traced the source to a family member in our circle who tested positive earlier in the week." All right, Ben Jurovsky, it's time for us to put our tinfoil hats on here. While it may be absurd, or quite frankly, in poor taste to speculate, I feel like we have to, because, well, you know, the Illinois conservatives are going to do it. Probably already have by now, so let's, let's nip this in the bud right now and get it over with here. I have one quick question to ask you about this, but I can't ask, we can't put on our tinfoil hats and ask a question without playing a certain song. You know what I mean? Sorry, I had all those alderman clips loaded up for Dave Glowetz. Good lord, there was like 50 of them.
I know.
All the aldermen.
He really brought it today, Dave Glowetz. I think I know the song you're going to play.
Let's hear from every single alderman on the city council. All right, here's this one. The janitor of the city council, "Oh yeah, I've been wiping these floors." That's very interesting. All right, we have, we have it here. Here we go. Let's just jump right into this here. Let's speculate.
There you go.
Now, Ben, this news from Welch does come just days after Welch set a date for the Madigan investigative stupid trial thing to start up again. And while I did just call it stupid, the trial seemed to be pretty effective when the election came around. So Ben, I got to ask you, is this all a ruse to stall the Madigan is bad trial?
No. Sorry. First of all, the Democrats dug up this email that mentioned Jim Durkan, the House Republican Leader, in regards to Commonwealth Edison. So before I get to that, let me say this. No, Dr. D, as much as I want to wear my tinfoil hat and believe whatever Alex Jones tells me, "Oh, you got the documents." I do not believe, this is a ruse, I believe that Chris Welch actually has COVID. Furthermore, I, I don't believe that there will be anything emerging from those hearings any more detrimental to Michael Joseph Madigan than have already been revealed. And here's the reality. Michael Joseph Madigan was the beneficiary, whether he realized it or not. He wants you to think that he didn't realize it. I don't think anybody believes that. Of the largest and generosity, I have that in quotes, of Commonwealth Edison, who gave out jobs and contracts to Michael Madigan's associates. And they've got, the feds have prosecuted, Commonwealth Edison has confessed, admitted to bribing, attempting to bribe in exchange for legislation that had been very favorable Commonwealth Edison. And I'll say this once, I'll say it twice, I'll say it again and again and again. They didn't need to quote unquote bribe Michael Madigan to get their legislation passed. They would have got it passed. So they, that's just business as usual in the state of Illinois, where you curry favor for powerful people, just, just to curry the favor, just to have them there, just so that you're, you're on your Rolodex. That's just how it goes. It's the same reason powerful Republican landlords in the loop hire Michael Madigan's property tax appeal business, or hire Ed Burke's property tax appeal business, or hire John Colleton's. They're just currying favor. And is the, in retrospect, should the legislation have passed? No. That Commonwealth Edison, did they exaggerate the amount of money they needed in order to soak more money from the consumers of Illinois? Yes. But that, that legislation was adopted with Republican votes as well. So the central argument that they had to bribe Michael Madigan in order to get that legislation passed is a fallacy. I would love to have a hearing. If you want to have a hearing, here's a hearing, which will never happen. Let's have a hearing into whether they needed that legislation in the first place, whether they needed us to pay more money to Commonwealth Edison in the first. How about having a hearing on that? I'm still waiting for the hearing in the Chicago City Council, by the way. Speaking of hearings that will never occur, as to what Popcorn Gate was about in Bobby Rush's office. I'm always, I always want to get to the bottom of things. So I would love to have an investigation into the legislation that supposedly was passed by bribing Madigan, to see if Commonwealth Edison deserved to have those rate hikes, whether we're paying too much, maybe we should get a refund. Maybe the Republicans and the Democrats who voted for it should all apologize for having voted for it. But I doubt that's what we're going to get, D. Instead, what we're going to get is an attempt by the Republicans in the state of Illinois to do what's been very successful for them all, for the last, I don't know, year or so, ever since Bush ran or left. And that is to vilify Michael Madigan to undercut Democratic campaigns, to undercut initiatives like the fair tax. It's a very successful tool. They will continue to use it until Michael Madigan either steps down or is replaced. And that's reality. So I don't believe that Welch, I don't know, well, he would have to have some other illness after COVID to, to just keep dragging this thing out. I do not believe in that conspiracy theory. I believe that he actually has it. And so I want to give my, I want to say, Chris Welch, I hope he get better. I'm sending out good vibrations and, because COVID is no joke. But D, I do not believe in that conspiracy theory, but I would love to see a hearing into whether Commonwealth Edison warranted that rate hike it got.
All right, and be on the lookout, everybody, for a scathing press release from Illinois conservatives calling Chris Welch a liar, more than likely. I mean, that's kind of how this goes. We've kind of figured how this goes by now. All right, and finally, more Madigan news. And in case you were wondering, yes, there's still a giant bus parked outside, waiting to roll over our Democratic Illinois Speaker, Michael Joseph Madigan. At the moment, we have 18 House Democrats onboard, as well as Senators Tammy Duckworth and Dicky D. Dick Durbin and Governor JB Pritzker. A Madigan reelection doesn't look like such a slam dunk this time around, does it, Ben?
Uh, why? No, it's not a slam dunk. That's for certain.
It's been slam dunks before, but not, not so much here. A nice little layup.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't look, I, I've spent a lot of time over last, not this weekend, but the weekend before, going through, God, D, it seems like my life moves in bizarre phases. Two weekends ago, I was obsessed with the General Assembly and Michael Joseph Madigan. This weekend, I was obsessed with the city council and why different aldermen voted with the way they did. These deep dives I keep taking into these local issues, getting deeper and deeper. But here's the deal with Madigan. He needs, follow me on this, folks, he needs a majority of the Democratic Caucus members to be their nominee to go before the full house and be elected speaker. No Republican will vote for him. We all know that. So he is, the pressure will be on those 18 House members, the Will Gazzardis of the world, your favorite state rep, D, to stand their ground in the face of this high profile showdown where Michael Madigan advances his name to be reelected as speaker and you Republicans all say no. And so then what? What are the Will Gazzardis of the world going to do at that point? It's either Madigan or nobody. You going to stay with your party or you going to abandon your party? I don't know what they're going to do. I don't know if Madigan will force that issue, but the fact that he doesn't have the majority that he needs now, does that, does not mean he won't get it in the future. You know what I'm saying, D? There could be flip flops on the horizon. You know, I've been on a flip flop a little bit on that.
You? No, no, never. Never.
And I've had this conversation with so many people, Ben, they can't flip flop. Some people will run against them. They've said it clearly, there's no way. I, you know, Madigan's a stubborn guy. He may force the issue. So that's why I keep, I'm looking for some wiser person in the Democratic Party who can take Michael Madigan, you know, to the side and say, Mike, we've been friends forever. But the time has come for the good of the party and the good of the state for you to step down and let somebody else do the job. I'm hoping for that, D, but they're all, you know, under that table. You know what I mean? It's like fighting some guy to do that is trying to fight a Republican who'll stand up to Trump.
Yeah, there's never flip flopping.
He's going to force that issue, D.
Never flip flopping on the, on the Flip Jor Flopski Show. Never, never flip flopping. But we have more bad news for Madigan. We now have our 19th House Democrat patiently waiting outside, ready to jump on this bus to figuratively roll over Madigan. By the way, hold on, Gazzardi, stop it. Venmo him. Just Venmo him and you're even, okay? Kind of Gazzardi on the bus here placing bets, Venmoing people. Just Venmo him and you're done.
He's a millennial. That's what they do.
Good lord, he loves Venmoing people. But we have our 19th House Democrat to welcome here. They've been waiting patiently outside here. So Ben, please, watch your feet. I'm opening the door. We got someone, oh, my goodness, I hit the horn on accident. Hold on, let me get, there's the door. Watch your feet. All right, let's welcome onboard 77th District Democratic State Rep out of DuPage, Kathleen Willis. Yeah, you don't have to be famous to get on this bus. Get on in here, Kathleen. All right, we have a press release from Kathleen Willis. The press release reads here, "Dear sir or madam, after a lot of thought and discussion with my family, I have come to the decision to let it be known that I will not be voting for Michael J. Madigan as Speaker for the 102nd General Assembly. As the House Democratic Caucus Chair, this decision was not made lightly." Oh, I bet it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
She says here, "I feel strongly that our caucus has a lot of hard work to accomplish in the upcoming legislative session, and we need to put the distraction that has been created by Representative Madigan behind us and move forward in mending the state of Illinois."
Yeah, that's a significant one. Caucus, high ranking caucus member. Again, I'm a little surprised it took her this long. She's from DuPage. Michael Joseph Madigan is not popular in DuPage. And, oh, Frank, I got to give you a shout out. Frank sent me a text over Thanksgiving holiday that sort of highlighted the point I was making. It showed Dick Durbin's, the base of vote that Durbin got in his reelection campaign, Senator Dick Durbin. And he's more and more become dependent on Chicago and Cook County and even DuPage County as his downstate vote has dwindled. He's originally from downstate Illinois, so that used to be his base. And the reality is that the downstate has become very hostile to Democrats. A good friend Bob DiBir lost when he ran for Madison County President of the County Board. The fair tax got swamped downstate. Justice Kilbride got swamped when he, in his retention battle. Democrats, whether you want to realize this or not, Michael Madigan is reviled in most areas of the state of Illinois outside of Cook and Chicago. And, and so the longer you stay with him, the more detrimental it will be to the Democratic Party. And I warn you, Illinois could go red. And so somebody from DuPage County, that's a, that's a district where Madigan is unpopular. Is it fair? No. They had heavy-handed machine Republicans from DuPage County, Lee Daniels and Paige Phillips, it's Henry Hyde, et cetera. It's not fair. But Republicans don't play it fair. And Madigan is not willing to come out and defend himself forcefully, doing that Wizard of Oz thing where he hides in the cave, not cutting it anymore. So the reality is the Democrats, the longer they stay loyal to Madigan, the more they jeopardize their chances to keep Illinois blue. That's just a fact. And so I'm surprised it took Willis that long, D, to issue that statement, because she's from DuPage County. But it seems to be a pretty obvious position that someone from DuPage or Lake or even suburban Cook County would take.
So there you are, Kathleen Willis, welcome on the bus. And that is the latest local news going on here. Remember, you can find previous Ben Jurovsky, that damn brown line. You can find previous Ben Jurovsky shows and Benny J. Bonus interviews and so much more at the Chicago Reader website, chicago reader dot com forward slash Jurovsky, and wherever else you download your favorite podcasts. We're now on the Reader YouTube channel, same time, same days, Tuesday through Friday, 1 until 3 PM Central Time. So tell your friends and let's see, we got a lot of people. We would like to welcome back Michael Girardi. He has found our new YouTube channel here. Also, Veron DB has found us. We got a new guy, Brian on here. What's going on, Brian? Jay Marie, Jay Marie is in the building. She has found, yep, she has found the YouTube channel. Go tell your friends. This is our new home now. We look forward to talking with you all tomorrow.
All right, I want to remind everybody, at 6:30, I'll be doing a First Tuesday with Maya Dukmasova, Alderwoman Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez and Peter PC Cunningham, a debate between the moderates and the lefties in the Democratic Party. Where should we go? What's our future? You can find it at noonchorus dot com backslash hideout, N-O-O-N-C-H-O-R-U-S dot com backslash hideout. So that should be a very fascinating debate. I want to thank Dave Glowetz, doing a great job breaking down the Chicago City Council vote. And of course, the man, the myth, the legend, the pride of joy of all Illinois, without whom the show would be possible. Give yourself a raise, take it out of petty cash, Dr. D.
I will.
Springtime, love it. Springtime, love it.
Springtime. Love it.